All right, it is six o'clock. I'm going to call to order the June 24, 2025 School Board Meeting for Independent School District 194. Everyone please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll take roll call starting from my right.
Brett Nicholson.
I'm Matt Swanson.
Michael Baumann.
Kim Baker.
Carly Anderson.
Brian Thompson.
All right, I want to acknowledge our two stakeholder guests in the audience today. Thank you guys for coming. Agenda additions. We don't usually. No, I had before and asked and was told that. If you would like to introduce yourselves, we do have a number of cabinet members here, some of which will be speaking tonight as well. But agenda additions, anyone need to add items to the agenda? Director Thompson, did you want to add an item to the agenda to discuss hiring policies and discussion items?
Yes, I'll do that. I'd like to add to the agenda the, the, the school district's hiring guidelines and hiring approach as an agenda topic for discussion.
All right, is there a motion to add that to the reports and discussions for the school board under Section 6?
I'll make the motion.
All right, there is a motion by Director Baker, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Director Thompson, there being a first and a second, motion to approve in addition to the agenda under reports and discussions to discuss the hiring policies for the school district. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say aye. All right, it is approved and added to the agenda. Any other additions or modifications? If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition by Director Nicholson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Baker. All in favor of approval of the agenda with that one addition, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, all right, it is approved. Move on to the good news. Superintendent Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good news for the June 24th, 93 graduates from the class of 2025 receive academic scholarships. This May, 93 students from our class of 2025 were awarded academic scholarships. These scholarships are a testament to the recipient's dedication to their studies and academic excellence. Forty-seven Lakeville North High School students and 46 Lakeville South High School students received scholarships on May 12th and May 19th at their respective senior scholarship awards programs. Congratulations to each of those students and to all those who support them. Lakeville North Boys Lacrosse Team takes third at state. Congratulations to the Lakeville North High School Boys Lacrosse Team on finishing an incredible season with third place in the Class A State Tournament. After winning the Class 1A Section Tournament on June 3rd with a score of nine to eight against our neighbors Farmington Tigers, the Panthers advanced to the 2025 Class A State Boys Lacrosse Tournament. The Panthers came in third place against the Eastridge Raptors on June 14th at Chaska High School with a score of 18 to 5. So congratulations to Lakeville North Boys Lacrosse. Lakeville South Girls Lacrosse Team takes fourth at state and congratulations to our Lakeville South High School Girls Lacrosse Team on finishing a great season with fourth place at our state tournament. After winning the Class 1A Section Tournament on June 3rd with a score of 13 to 7, again against our neighbors at Farmington Tigers, the Cougars advanced to the 2025 Class A State Girls Lacrosse Tournament and the Cougars came in fourth place against Park Wolf Pack on June 14th at Eden Prairie High School with a score of 5 to 15. Cougars claim Miss Lacrosse and Miss Goalie titles for the 2025 season. Congratulations to three Class of 2025 graduates from Lakeville South High School Girls Lacrosse Team who earned top honors from the Minnesota All Sports Alliance for their outstanding performances during the 2025 season. Charlotte Fannin and Ella Mills were named finalists for the Miss Lacrosse Minnesota Award. Fannin was ultimately selected as the 2025 Miss Lacrosse Minnesota after leading the state with an impressive 135 points this season. She becomes the third Lakeville South student athlete to receive this distinguished honor. We also congratulate Kate Bale, who was named the 2025 Miss Goalie Minnesota. Bale is the second Lakeville South athlete to receive the Miss Goalie Award. Congratulations all. If you want to read more about the amazing things happening in our district at ISD194.org/news. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you Superintendent Baumann. There is no public comment, no one signed up today, maybe next time. Moving on to the consent agenda, any items that any board members want to remove for further discussion?
Yep.
Director Nicholson.
Can we pull out 4B, the employment recommendations?
All right, we'll remove that for discussion, any other items? Director Thompson?
I'd like to pull out item F, the Minnesota State High School League.
All right, anything else? If there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda except for items B and F.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion by Director Baker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Nicholson, being a first and a second, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda items A, C, D, E, G, H, I, and J, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, they are approved. Let's start with 4B, Director Nicholson, if you want to jump in and ask your questions there or?
Yeah, so I wanted to ask. I just wanted to ask a question regarding Assistant Superintendent Emily McDonald currently holds that position, that position is marked again. I was wondering if we could get a little bit of clarity, I know that for all the stakeholder involved, you know, maybe clarify what roles responsibilities, what might be changing, what might not be changing in her current position, maybe why she's on there if it's material, and then that's, that's kind of my main question.
Superintendent Baumann?
Sure, thank you Director Nicholson. What I'd like to just share about this is we are diligently working and trying to develop our commitment to strengthening our system-wide leadership and the operational cohesion of our school district. I think it's an element that is not optimally functioning across our school system. I'd like to share just an overview of the Chief of Staff role, if that's okay with you, and highlight why this role is essential. Functioning with the Chief of Staff serves as the primary director, this position will serve as a primary director of all district staff operations. And to have this position designed to create full alignment across our departments, ensuring the coordination, consistency, and clarity of work throughout our system has large supervisory requirements and a scope that is substantial. It spans the day-to-day staff management for all the staff across the system, implementation of internal controls, the quality assurance across the district for the outputs that we are able to produce, and synchronization of staff priorities, which has been a big challenge, I think, as we've, as I have returned in trying to adjust the culture a little bit. It's also support for the role and the work that I have to do, but it'll primarily focus on executive team and director level across the district. Some of the key responsibilities, first of all, staff operations and objectives will include a staff operations plan, task management. We have taken the strategic plan, a lot of work was done over the last year and a half, two years, that delineates and provides for specified tasks by business line of operation that we want to track, and we want to track those in order to maintain alignment with our strategic plan and to make sure that the quality is occurring across all the levels of the, of the staff. We're trying to develop a district-wide budget input and inquiry process to support all stakeholders and ensure transparency. That's one of the biggest challenges, I think, in any school district is where do those inputs come from, how are they marshaled, how are they prioritized, and how are they reported to the school board so that the school board has clarity around where those priorities should be focused? Supervising the development and sustainment of quarterly business review system, this is new in the system. It's something I've talked about, I think, quite a bit with regard to responding to your desires to have dynamic data reports across the, the school system, and this is, this is also a major functional change within the system. So currently, there's no such dedicated capability that exists in our district, and this has placed a strain, I think, on operational efficiency and will continue to do so for two factors. One is the quality assurance, quality control, I think, is going to go up, and I also think that one of the other challenges is how, how agile are we and able to provide the information that the board and the public deserves? I think also because Dr. McDonald has a long history in the school system, I think she's ideally suited, she's got a high professional credentials as an education doctor in education, she's got a superintendent's license from Minnesota, I think those credentials are essential to this role and will be functionally very valuable. It is, for all intents and purposes, what I would have liked to have done in my first go-around here and was not able to accomplish that, because I do think that having these systems operating at a high level are very, very important. I also think I can, I'm ideally suited as a coach, teacher, mentor for her in order to execute on this at a high level, having done this professionally in two other assignments and then being the Deputy Superintendent, St. Paul Public Schools, doing exactly this job on a scale three times larger than Lakeville area schools. So I do think I'm ideally suited to help her do that. We want to do, with this role, we want to move with alacrity, dispatch, clarity, and impact, and do that right away, and bringing somebody else in to do a function like this would be very challenging to achieve that alacrity, that dispatch, that clarity and impact. So I think it's, it's a very important move for us to make as a system, and as you know, we are looking to bring an Executive Director of Teaching and Learning in, so this position's no longer dual-hatted, it's highly focused with a large span of control. I know I said a lot, hopefully that's helpful.
Director Baker?
Yeah, I just have a few questions. So I'm a very visual person, so looking at the-
So that org chart in there has not been updated-
Correct.
-to reflect how that will work? So I just want to say that before you-
Right, yeah. My question is based on this, the Assistant Superintendent and the role that was previously had, schools in continuous improvement, Director of Technology, Elementary and Secondary Teaching and Learning, and Director of Early Learning, like, under her purview?
Yep.
So what will that look like now with this role?
All the executive level and two levels down.
Okay, and then, so then my second question is, knowing that you are hiring an Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, would that person then be overseeing-
The teaching and learning organization.
So just directors of elementary and secondary, or would that encompass early learning as well? Because I, I'm looking at like a whole broad picture that we would be E-12 and that person would be able to continuity build, you know, throughout-
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
That will be the, that will be, we won't change that.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be under both then?
Both who?
Like the Director of, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning would be-
Yes.
-Director over elementary and secondary and over early learning.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, Director Anderson?
I guess I'm wondering how we as a board should see this impact, like, what are the measurables that we should see as a result of this change? Because I know you've worked in a much bigger system, like, what are the things that you feel like with this change you can deliver upon?
Well, what, what the goals are that you give me will be nested, her, her tasks will be nested in that. So I think that's the starting point, because I can, as I explained here, the staff synchronization, using the operational plan and doing the, all the tasks there, which there are, I can share that document with you, there are by business line of operation in total, over 300 tasks that we want to monitor and track in the system, but I think the goals that you give me have to occur before I can, like, itemize that for you.
Okay, can I, sorry.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we've talked about is just at the higher level, kind of seeing the systemic vision like you're talking about, so do you feel like this will result in just greater consistency across our schools and making sure that there's similar operate-
Well, I'll be able to be more engaged at the schools, as I try to be as much as I can, it's, it's very difficult to do that. I want the staff preparation and then the follow-through supervision, that is the primary function of the Chief of Staff and the primary staff team. So that, making that work in a concentrated manner is the, is the ideal goal, and we are not in a condition to do that as we set today. The fidelity is the problem, the follow-through is the problem.
Okay.
Director Baker?
Last question. So then, knowing that Dr. McDonald had been working on our mentorship program for our district, will that now go under the purview of the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, or is that something that she'll be overseeing so that we can make sure that that gets implemented with fidelity, because we don't want to be out of compliance?
Well, so the, the TNL will have the primary responsibility, but obviously Dr. McDonald is here, she knows that, that will be another level of support for that. We want to broaden that, as we have shared in the past, as we've talked about the mentorship program, so she'll be responsible to pursue the, the staffing and the development of that program, along with many others.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, when you think about a QBR and all the pieces that are associated with that, and when you think about how are we going to better articulate the inputs of budget requests that literally come from everywhere and organize those into a process that's inside the budget development process timelines that exist as directed by the Minnesota Department of Education, which today we're getting to the last stage of at least one of those, we have to, we have to figure that out and be more disciplined in that process so that the right priorities are defined and rise to the top of whatever priority list that we want to articulate. And that should be a collective process, not a compartmentalized process as it is right now.
Will Dr. McDonald continue to oversee teaching and learning pending the retention of the new Executive Director?
Uh, no, she will not.
Who will be in charge of that?
Well, the staff actions of that, she will have a responsibility for, just as I do, but the, the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning has that responsibility.
Was, is, is there an Executive Director of Teaching and Learning right now?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying pending, once until that individual is hired.
Oh, no, she will have to remain in that role. I apologize, I misunderstood your question. No, until, my practice has always been, until you have set the condition, you, you operate as you are, because the confusion of that transition will create all kinds of havoc.
Director Thompson?
Yeah, I think I might have misheard you, but if you can provide additional clarity, when I think about an org structure, you've got the superintendent, and then you've got all the executive directors that reporting to the superintendent. Did I hear that the, the executive directors would report into the Assistant Superintendent? And then you-
The Chief of Staff-
Or does she have a dotted line?
The Chief of Staff will be the staff director. The, the executive directors remain reporting to me, they will have to report to her as well in order to do the staff actions necessary, so you can do, two things can be true at the same time, however, ultimately, I am responsible for their evaluations and their performance and the principles as well.
Director Nicholson?
I guess, does that put her more in a dotted line responsibility there, or are they going to be more directly to her?
Yeah, dotted line's a fair statement around the, if you, if you need a, a graphic representation.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Would you say that, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Director Anderson, yeah, quick one.
I was just gonna say, I think one of the things I just wanted to kind of bring back into the picture is, because I think whenever we're making these kinds of changes, you know, this is, this is a big change, it's, has money associated with it, and something that I have reflected on is just when we were looking at different districts and how much money was devoted to admin for various districts and how low we are. And so I think people are gonna, some people are gonna challenge this kind of decision just in terms of where we are financially, but I think if, at the administrative level, we need more support to be able to deliver on the things that the board is asking for, and ultimately, the board is asking for things that hopefully won't move us in the right direction, then it's, it makes sense to make these kinds of changes. So I just want to remind people that I see the visual in my head, we don't have it before us, but our district is far lower than others in terms of admin.
2.9% on admin in fiscal year '26. Also, the, the changes that I have made were, were done, in, in the three positions that I am, that I have proposed are, are neutral for the '26 budget, Executive Director of Operations is coming from LTFM, not on Fund One, the Teaching and Learning, we did an accounting adjustment for our operations costs for utilities, and the, there is no salary adjustment on, on Dr. McDonald's, and that's already programmed in the budget.
I just think those are important facts for the public to be aware of.
No, I, I am extremely sensitive to that reality, for all the, the reasons that people have brought up in the past, having dealt with this year-over-year since 2005, so I'm, I'm trying to be sensitive to that as I look at what administration and what the costs are. What I'm trying to do is match the need with where we have shortfalls without putting the pressure on Fund One.
Can I just add one thing just to that? I mean, there is a visualization on page 54 of the preliminary budget that's on the board book today, that does show our administrative costs, like you're saying, Carly, are significantly less than a lot of districts.
So I have the data before that, and just for comparison, in fiscal year 2018, we were spending 7.4 million on administration, we hung at 7.4 for 2008, 2019. 2020, we cut it back to 5.3, we got to our all-time lowest in fiscal year '23, which was approximately 4 million, and so now we've kind of crept up a little bit. So fiscal year '26, it would put us at approximately 4.7 million, which obviously is quite, quite a downturn from that 7.4 million that was in 2018. So I just want to give that for comparison, yes, it is a change, but given where we were to where we are now, I feel like it balances out.
Yeah, that's good perspective. Brett, did you have a comment? Sorry, I cut you off earlier. Brian?
Yeah, I think what everyone has shared, I think this makes sense, and I try to, I'm trying to, like, give myself an analogy or metaphor or whatever, how this is set up, like, you know, if you're a football coach, do you have the right, you have an offensive coach, you got a defensive coach, and when you have an Assistant Superintendent who's also playing the, the Director of Teaching and Learning, they're also the offensive line and the offensive coach and the wide receiver coach probably at the same time. And so I don't know if, if that resonates with other folks, but from my point of view, having a dedicated person who focuses on our academics, education, teaching and learning makes, makes the right sense for us, as, as that's kind of been our focus. In regards to the Executive Director of Operations, previously, you know, Mr. Holmgren had that and finance, and so you've kind of managing the whole, you know, the, all the facilities, all of the custodians, LTFM dollars plus the financials, I think by bifurcating that, that also provides a little bit of checks and balance and governance, where you've got now a finance department or a finance team focused only on finance, and so they, there is no bias, there is no, you know, there is no, like, they're, they're department agnostic, and they can say, here's where it is, here's the financials, and, and obviously with our current budget that we're in, while we are getting to 7.3% unassigned balance, we'd love to get to 10, Bill has done a great job to getting us there, but does that also mean that did other areas within the scope of his responsibility, you know, may not be at the level that they could have been, because there's such a huge focus on the financial side? So having someone who's focused on, you know, operations, everything that is needed to enable the education to be delivered, having a dedicated person in that, in that space makes sense. The Assistant Superintendent, when you've got an organization that does $300 million in revenue in some capacity, you've got 1,200 FTEs working for your organization, and you've got one kind of CEO or one superintendent, there, there is value in having a Chief of Staff slash person being that, the right-hand person in that effort. So it is not, while, while we provide guidance and we provide input, it is, we've given you the responsibility to field the team that you need to execute on the goals and the directions of the, of the school board, and then we will provide feedback when that makes sense, and then the only ask that I have is that we've got clear financials, I mean, metrics, ROI, and making sure that- ROI, and making sure that, you know, what are the progress, things that can we show that we're making because of these changes that we have done? So from the operation side, from teaching and learning, from the council, to the executive director of operations and so forth. So, thank you.
Yes, and I look forward to partnering with you to clearly identify those and articulate them.
Director Thompson, or I mean, sorry Brett.
Yeah, I think just to add to that, with the change in role not being over, teaching and learning not being over technology and continuous improvement and all those functions anymore, just want to make sure that we detail out kind of, these are her roles and responsibilities, these are the expectations, and then that all should tie to our metrics, tie to showing that we're delivering better information, more transparency, faster, we can respond better, all that kind of stuff.
Acknowledged, I will do my best to do that.
Brian?
So then I do have one procedural question. While this role is the assistant superintendent, and this role will continue to be an assistant superintendent, is there a reason why it was listed here? And I appreciate it just from a transparency perspective, but if the role isn't really, if the title isn't changing, but the scope of the responsibilities may change here, you know, parts of the scope of the responsibilities may be changing, but it's still an assistant superintendent, does it warrant to be on this consent agenda?
I don't have the answer, just asking.
The intent was to be transparent. I could defer to our HR director or executive director of human resources slash administrative services, but that would be my reason to have it there.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve. One more, Brian?
I want to move to a separate topic on this section, but I don't have any further questions regarding this, on this role.
On B?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we gonna approve B?
Do you have another question on the employment recommendations?
I have another question on B.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'm looking at the employment and recommendations, and I see a lot of, and this is for a topic for later this afternoon, but I want to make sure that I understand that we're aligned with the hiring of staff, and we've talked about this a few times in previous meetings, but when I'm looking at kind of like where the staff is coming in, in their step and lane category, it has given me pause to make sure that are we being efficient and effective with the dollars that we have? And the reason I ask is that we've got some roles here that we are, that you're asking the board to approve, that might be outside the scope of, outside of the scope of optimizing our budget. So as an example, you know, there's a lot of, there's some teachers here that are falling in the employee group called teachers, and there is a salary range for staff when they come in. And so these teachers, when they start in as an entry level, start off at $51,996, all the way up to $97,000. So there's a really huge $50,000 span from first-year teachers to senior teachers that have their 60 credits plus Step 16, or I believe that's like 15 or 16, one of those two steps. So I'm looking at this list, and I see we've got reading interventionist, which are great that we have, and they're kind of coming in the, and kind of in this middle category where they've got their masters, and they're kind of in the middle category. But then I see this other physical health education teacher who's coming as a MA 15, which is 15 additional credits, Step 10. I'm just trying to better understand, how are we, what are the guardrails that our hiring supervisors have to ensure that we're optimizing our budget? And here's another example, we've got a math teacher that's coming from Century Middle School who's an MA 60, Step 16, which is the very highest step that a teacher can come in at, which is $97,000. I want to make sure and acknowledge, I am not saying that person is not worth $97,000. What I'm saying is that, do we as a district have a policy or have some kind of guidance in place where if we've got 850 teachers that we are hiring, can we afford 850 teachers at $97,000? And so when I think about it at a macro lens, you know, you would have a reasonable distribution of staff, those that are kind of in the entry level, those are in the middle level, and those are at the experience level, so that as our district continues to grow, we can maximize the budget that we have. So as I, again, look at this list of new teachers that are being hired, I'm not going to vote no, because I would assume we've already given offers to these folks, and it will look unfavorable if we rescinded that offer. But I do want us to make sure that we think through the allocation mix, so that we've got the right optimal, you know, staffing folks for the budget that we have, for the experience that we're looking for, for the culture that we want here in our district, and the academic levels that we're looking for. And so that's probably just a high level, not a high level, but a lengthy overview, which we can discuss later this afternoon, or later during the, in the agenda topics. But I want to call that out, because we're paying, reading, we're paying, again, there is a, there seems to be inconsistencies. I'll pause here.
Well, and I guess let me just ask Superintendent Bowman, or maybe Brenda, if you know, is there any policy currently in place that restricts or provides guidance as far as where we want to focus our hiring?
We did at one point put a cap on that during the budget cuts, but that's no longer in place. That was removed. I'm not sure the exact date of when it was removed, but I-
Was it just a temporary one?
It was just something we did as part of the budget cuts, but I'm not sure when that changed. Do you have the date of when that changed?
Well, I think when we did the $7 million budget reduction, part of the cost savings was that all future hires were going to be in the, more of the entry level space to maximize the budget and cost savings. And then again, as I see this list, we've got folks that are MA Step 16s, and someone who's an MA Step 16, I believe, makes $86,000, which is very close to the $97,000. So again, not, I don't want, not saying these individuals are not worth that, but from an allocation mix of our district, you cannot run an organization when you pay your quarterback $200 million, and you can't have an offensive line or wide receivers, because you don't have any money for that. And so I'm just, that's just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so the cap that was put in place during budget cuts, I believe we did that for the, what year would that have been, '24, '25 school year? And then that stopped. So we're bringing people in according to what the contract says as far as placement, so we give people their years of experience and their education. There are things that you do need to consider, such as, I'm just gonna speak in generalities, okay? So typically, a teacher who is coming in at the highest step, they typically are going to be older than a first-year teacher, not always, but generally. So then you need to look at other circumstances, such as protected class, someone who is over 40, someone who may be female, a number of protected classes when you're looking at hiring. So we don't want to say that we just flat-out aren't going to hire more experienced teachers, because we don't, we don't want to do anything discriminatory there. We could, however, offer that applicant a lower step and place them lower, they're gonna turn it down and go to another school district. I think also, it speaks a lot for Lakeville area schools, that we have someone who is that experienced, who is leaving wherever they are now to come here. I think that that speaks very highly for Lakeville area schools, that those teachers want to be here. But I can go into more information when we get to the agenda item later.
Yeah, and again, I think maybe this is part of the bigger discussion that we'll have a little later tonight, unless you guys had comments on the specific 4B action items?
I'll wait, then.
I'll wait.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that there is no policy that would prevent us from approving this.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions on 4B, I'd entertain a motion to approve the employment recommendations, leave requests and resignations.
Submissed.
All right, motion by Director Anderson, is there a second? I'll second it. Are there being a first and a second? All those in favor of approval of the employment recommendations, leave requests and resignations at 4B, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous and approved. Brian, you want to jump on 4F? Got some questions or comments?
Yes. 4F is the Minnesota State- Minnesota State High School League renewal membership. And so by renewing this membership, this allows all of our high school students in activities, in athletics, to be able to compete at the state high school level for, like we've always done. And in doing so, we are following the rules of the Minnesota State High School League and the policies that they have in place for our students to participate in those endeavors. Just curious, has like, has a school district ever not renewed their membership in this?
I am unaware of any such situation for Lakeville area schools. My time only goes back to 2013. That's the best answer I can give you. I'm unaware of any non-participation.
I think the Minnesota State High School League that we are participating, or that we would be renewing, and gives our student athletes and student folks that are in various activities, opportunity to be engaged in their future, the things that they have interest in. And so I am in favor of this, but I just want to make sure that folks are aware that as a school district, by not participating in this, that would not allow our students to be involved in competition against other high schools that are part of the state high school program.
Which would include probably all of the schools in the South Suburban Conference? Is that accurate?
More than likely.
Yeah.
State tournaments, yep. Yep. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve 4F?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, with the first being made by Director Thompson, the second by Director Baker, all those in favor of approving the membership renewal for the MSHSL under 4F of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Onto reports and discussion, facility use update. Sraeus.
Good evening, Chair, excuse me, excuse me. Good evening, Chair Spontan, members of the school board, Superintendent Bowman, Executive Cabinet, and all others who are here this evening and watching online. My name is Devon Ann Rais, and I am the facilities systems and use manager for our district. Tonight, we're just going to be bringing an annual presentation to you. We will be covering multiple different pieces within it, including, there we go, a little, I'll go, I'll be brief, but we're gonna have a team review, just because you are newer in this board, and we want to be able to give that information to you. I'm gonna go over some basic definitions, so you understand the lingo of the world that we live in, and many of our school buildings have adjusted to that as well, as well as many of our community user groups. We're gonna go over some data, which I know that you guys really like, including not just how we use it, but how we use our facilities, but also the revenues and the costs, and because comparisons are a real deal when we're talking about money. We do have some district comparisons with multiple other school districts. Finally, we will end with letting you know what has, what leadership has asked me to bring forward to put in, to implementation upon approval by you. So, make sure we press the right button. I am a full-time member of our team. We have three other full-time members, including an auditorium coordinator, a facilities assistant, as well as our onsite specialists. We have approximately 35, and the reason I say approximately is because they are casual employees, and they are in different teams that we have, including our facility use supervisors, our auditorium, event and stadium supervisors. We also have technicians for those same roles, and within the technician piece, we have a student role and a non-student role, so that even our students can begin to get involved and have another avenue of things that they may be interested in that we can help them develop, while they also may have even their first job in that role. So the other thing that was added this past year is we do now have districts aquatics technical supervisor, so we have a stipend position that role oversees all of the high school occurrences that happen and contests that happen at Century, and then any additional really amazing events that Century or any other pool is able to host, including Special Olympics we had in the past. So we have additional casual members who are trained on that. Many of those casual members are cross-trained in different roles, so.
Can you clarify casual member for me?
Sure. You, me? So there's, and Brenda can possibly help if I, please, if I don't speak properly on it, but, so there's full-time, and then there's part-time, and then beyond that, there is casual. So casual do not attain to medical benefits, they work a very small, limited amount of hours. So casual is gonna be somebody who may be wanting to work three to 15 hours a week. Yep, and we don't have, they don't have consistent schedules, so with that, it creates a Rubik's Cube kind of way to be able to staff things. Thank you. All right, if I can move forward, just to recap what this site says, there's a lot of words there, but really, what they're all just describing is that while our facilities and our grounds are in very high demand within our district, our staff is also always on. We are available pretty much all year round, six to seven days a week. We even have a dedicated general facilities line that people can call when they're onsite, if they have real in-time concerns, questions, safety items, or maybe the room that they reserved is still locked. And we want to get that taken care of, hopefully that doesn't happen very often. We work not just with our community groups and non-district groups, which we'll get to that in a moment, we also work very closely with every single school and every single district department, including our district office departments, and those around the entire school area, just to be able to ensure logistics are in place for all of their events, that we have insurance requirements in place, and all of the above, so.
Great.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next here. So the definition piece I wanted to touch base on, and if you already know these things, thank you for indulging me just a bit. Our district-sponsored groups are anything that is underneath the umbrella of our schools in our district. Underneath the liability of that, the monies that are there are going straight into a district account directly, and ultimately, everything that falls underneath that district-sponsored use is subject to all the district policies. Excuse me. Versus a non-district-sponsored group, so I tried to be very simple, sorry about that, with it, and so I summarized, so anything with the operations of an organization or a user group, their personnel, their finances are not directly overseen or deposited directly into a district account that we would be accountable for, or that you would be giving policy direction on, that would be then considered non-district. So when we are contacted by someone who wants to be able to schedule something, and they believe that they are underneath the school umbrella, our staff has qualifier questions to be able to just sort of build a relationship, ask them some basic items, and then once we know what that is, it guides them, our staff, on what steps are next needed to make sure that we follow the process that we've set in place. So for all non-district-sponsored use, we do have an insurance requirement, they do have to provide to us a certificate of insurance. Currently, that minimum is a $1 million per occurrence in general liability, with ISD 194 listed as additional insurance. I point that out only because it used to be 1.5, and we were able to get clarity and move on, adding that into the addendum officially, that it is at 1 million now. So each one of the non-district-sponsored use does fall into three different classifications. So we have the two umbrellas, so the district-sponsored and the non-district-sponsored, and then underneath the non-district sponsors, we have three different kind of classifications that a group can fall into, and that will determine what type of fees will be associated with the use that they're asking for.
So district-sponsored, no costs?
No costs.
But non-district-sponsored, then it falls into these categories?
Correct.
Carly?
So I know we had an email about, or I think we all had an email about this, about the senior party at the high school- the senior party at the high school.
Correct.
That would be.
Non-district.
Non-district, because it's not organized with the, like it's a student-related event. Sorry, go ahead.
I apologize.
Oh, no.
So that is considered a non-district event, because the monies that are brought in, because the planning that is done, is not done by a direction within something that superintendent or yourselves would have approved that role to oversee. They do provide and did provide insurance on their own, and were able to work great logistics with our team on a lot of different walkthroughs and pieces, and we worked with the other support departments, so I believe they all had a great time.
So then that does come with a fee, though, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is, is there any way to not have that be associated with a fee, or if it's, I mean, I'm just thinking, that's a very specific student-built event, that if it wasn't happening, would be pretty sad for seniors, so I'm just.
Do you think if the school collected fees from the students and it came through the school?
I think I know where you're going, because I think I might be in alignment with you. Now, obviously, we haven't gone to the next two, three slides that might have definitions of the non-district levels, but if there is an activity or an event that's being hosted that is only eligible for our students, then maybe that should be one that gets grandfathered and saying, hey, you get, it's a freebie. Because, like, I don't see a non-Lakeville graduate going to the senior party. You know what I mean? Now, if it is a, that's how I would think through that. Now, if you were having an event, and I'll use the Lakeville Soccer Club as an example, they don't just have Lakeville students, athletes. They have got athletes from Prior Lake, and they've got athletes from Burnsville. So if you've got participants leveraging our spaces that don't go to our school district, then one can argue, maybe that's a different category. But for an activity where we know it is all our students that go there, maybe they shouldn't have to pay a fee. And here's another example, which maybe we will get to, is the PTOs. You know, they are not, they may not have the funding, and I don't know if they do or not, so I'm just, I'm making this up, but if you have, if you're a PTO Lakeview or Eastview, and you're hosting an activity and only Eastview students are eligible to come, one would, one could argue, well, maybe that facility use should be free and not follow the non-district sponsor pathway, because the funding that they get don't go directly into a certain category. So I'll pause here, because there might be more.
Yeah. I mean, they currently pay, right? So we're not changing any classifications or moving anyone into, hey, you don't have to pay anymore, or now you do have to pay.
Correct, but I think it's a good point, and if I may, I just would like to be able to sort of touch on what you just spoke on. In the world of facility use rental, whether it's Lakeville or anywhere, whether it's a school district or any type of thing, there has to be, unless district leadership provides different direction, of course, there has to be a consistent standard that is followed for all groups. So in the senior party example, again, I'm acting on what we currently have in place. If that were to change from district leadership, of course, I will follow that. But currently, what is in place is because of how the monies are done, how the liabilities are done, how the decision of what and how security is done for those events, because it isn't overnight. So there's a lot of layers of planning that go in, that the district has no, there is no staff person, a part of that committee, that is a sheer committee, and though it's a one night, and yes, it's a great night for seniors, hopefully, I'll have a lot of great fun, there are hundreds of groups and committees in our community that would say the exact same thing, that they have the benefit for the student, and they offer this in an academic sense, or they offer this in an athletic sense, or fine arts, and that's where it comes back to, in a large school district, having that set standard and that set consistency that I can be held accountable, and my staff can be held accountable to make sure we're doing our job, that there is no favoritism, because that's the last thing that we want to add to the conversation when there's already a lot of other objectives that you're working toward. So that's just sort of an explanation of how we got to that point. As far as the PTO goes, I would like to just clarify for that one. It was determined, and correct me if I'm wrong, three years ago, possibly a little over three years ago, by leadership then, that the PTOs would not pay a rental or usage fee, and they were the only organization type that would not, and that is simply because what they did was literally everything done for the full child within the school environment, within the school day. They do, however, if they chose to say, have a daughter daddy, daddy-daughter dance, sorry, they would pay, if it was on a Saturday at an elementary building, they would pay the staff fees, because those buildings would be closed, and they would help offset the costs of that. All other groups that we'll get into, if you'd like, I can go to next.
Yeah.
I appreciate that clarification, because I feel like these, sometimes these questions are one-offs to us, when it's like, huh, that does, like, make sense that that would be a costly thing, but as you're saying, you could start adding up the groups, like Girl Scouts, Boy Scout, like, those are all Lakeville students, let's say, but you're right, there's lots and lots that you would have to make exceptions.
And they're all very valuable.
Appreciate that explanation.
Yeah. Before we move into classifications, I just want to make it real clear again that all facility use that happens after a school day is done till the very end of the last event is on our school calendar. That includes all school-sponsored items, all district office-sponsored items, and that includes all non-district-sponsored items, and that a calendar is accessible to public. We and my office do manage that and manage all those requests. We work to ensure the logistical pieces are there, and we work very hard to keep that as accurate and up-to-date as possible, including, say, if because of rain, we have to close fields, we try and update that pretty quick as well. No? Okay. You had to look, there's a question, look. All right. So moving on, here's just a real, use the right, see, we used the right one, we'll be good. So here's the breakdown of the three classifications. Class one would be the local school groups that we've been talking about, but are not limited to what you have listed there. There are boosters, there are youth organizations, there are PTOs, our out-of-season from State High School, MSHESO was referenced earlier. So out-of-season is considered non-district, because their boosters or their youth associations do handle a lot of their financials and all those decisions for their out-of-season training, and they pay for those, so that puts them into a non-district sponsored piece. We also have nonprofit adult groups, with the exception that is noted there. And then also, any national election polls, caucuses, school board, local state, those type of things, are all fall under class one. National election polls and caucuses, there are no charges for those across the board, I just need to clarify that, in case there is any questions. Political conventions do fall into class two, because they bring in more than 200 people, and that would be the definition of the first one under class two. So within class two is the next level of, it's non-local, and we'll actually give you a definition on that, that'll be the end of the definitions, I promise. Nonprofit youth, nonprofit adults, other K through 12 schools and school organizations, such as a charter school from Minneapolis rented one of our auditoriums a couple weeks ago for their graduation. So we also have religious organizations, colleges, universities, and class three is simple. If you are for-profit, you're in class three. So, do we have questions on the classifications? Because this is something that my team asked be in at the presentation, because this is a big question that comes up.
Brian?
Yeah, can you provide, if you can, a couple examples of who would be considered, well, I see PTOs, I see, let's say, like, the soccer booster club for the high school program, and then when we get into class two, would that be the Lakeville Soccer Association? I'm sorry, the Lakeville Traveling Soccer Club, or would that be, would they be considered class three? And then would, is class two also, like, our basketball association, like, where do they fall?
Sure. So all the basketball associations would fall, as long as they provide, and they do notify us, you know, what their status is if they ever change, but right now, they all fall under a nonprofit status. And Lakeville Soccer Club, who is who we have registered with us, and through their given documentation, is also underneath the class one as well. So our football associations, we have band boosters, they would fall under that, so really, any of our students who are being, have extra attention and extra opportunities given to them by people outside of a district role, those would fall under class one, unless, of course, they're for-profit.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. I'm going to ask Bill, Director Holmgren, to come join me. I'm going to explain this, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the data, and he's going to help talk about some revenue and cost items. We talked about local. Local is defined currently, and it was updated last year, for clear understanding that if a group's primary address is based within our boundaries, that that organization overseeing the events, insurance, lists that group's primary address on the required certificate of insurance, then we will consider them as local. It comes up, not all the time, but it does, so we wanted to include it here. So now to the data piece, as you can see here, in the red primary pie chart, that is the district versus non-district use, and this is from 3 o'clock, or when school is out, across the district till the last evening event is completed. 81.8, 82% is by our district, and these are data, these are numbers from 2024, or sorry, 3/25, from July 1 through May 8. The pie chart on the right, which is primarily blue, is 88% class one is our, you know, so we do have a focus on ensuring our community has that party of being able to use the facilities that they're a part of. Class two came in at 8%, and class three is 3.9. One thing to note about space and maximization, something that every board since I've been here, a mission that has been stated within the policy, is that they want to ensure that we can try and maximize the use of our facilities. And so our school districts have done the same, because they've created amazing more events after the school time is over, and that's across the board, so that's why those other two numbers are a little bit smaller.
Devon, is it, is it first come, first served with reservations?
There's a good process in place, and I'd be happy to get that to you. If you'd like, I can go through it, it is lengthy.
Oh, no worries then.
Okay.
We can email it.
Okay. It is also available on our website.
Okay.
Yes. All right, you're up.
Well, we can talk a little bit about numbers. Over the last few years, we've been working hard trying to get to a place where our budget wasn't running at deficit when we talk about our facility use, which was really considerably running as a deficit when we look back three years. So going forward right now, with the changes that are being forward in the different categories of what there be, people would be paying, you can see here that on our revenue side, the general rent are two and three class areas. You see a relatively large increase, after we tell you it's 7%, but one thing to remember is the 25 numbers are only through May, actually, the end of April. So there is a bigger, bigger jump. So anyway, with the new fee schedule, you see that our total will be running up to almost $1 million on the revenue side. We look at the expenditure side, here you can see where our costs are at. So we look at our auditorium operations, our casual staff and our facility team, and of course, we've got a lot of custodial time in these different facilities as they get used. You see that we're spending 935 this year so far. And so looking at 26.
Yeah. Brian?
These are, these are costs outside of the normal pay of the staff, and so if they're working sat, you know, after their normal hours, so these folks are really working like 50, 60 hours a week, potentially.
When you look at the custodial time, that's all after the regular hours.
Okay.
And it's always overtime.
Got it.
Right. Past their 40 hours.
So when you say overtime.
These are mainly, these are mainly Saturday hours or late evening hours.
But when you say overtime, we're paying time and a half for these folks, for these positions?
Well, it depends on the day. If we have a Sunday, that's double time for our custodials, or if they're actually come in and work on a holiday, which we have a lot of groups wanting to use our facilities on a holiday, we're paying double time for our custodial.
It should be noted, we do charge in those situations when it's outside of business hours or the size of the group, but based on current standards that we have in place, we are only charging for what the group is there for, with the time that they're there, and not the actual time it's costing our custodial to get the building ready to turn it over for next-day operations. And that was a big piece that we talked about this year to try and recover that, so that is going to be something you'll see on the final slide.
But that's also leveraging existing resources beyond the 40 hours that they already are working. So we're paying them overtime, whereas if we identified external sources to cover those services, there could be some cost savings there. Now, obviously, that would be more to the staff, but like, we're paying, are we paying overtime and double time? Is it necessary for us to pay double time and overtime, if there were additional resources that are working over the weekend instead of the weekdays? You know what I mean?
Talking about like bringing in a contract?
Yeah, bringing in a contractor, or bringing in extra staff, but that's, I'm having a tough time, us having to pay double time and overtime, if we don't have to.
You have people in multiple buildings, though, right? I mean, it's not like we're running one building where one person can cover, you know, say, an event at Century, but then what about all the other schools? What about everything else? Somebody's got to.
But if our custodians, custodians are already working Monday through Friday, 40 hours a week.
You're talking about hiring another full-time person to.
Or persons to offset.
It'd be multiple.
One would think. That's all.
At this, at this point in time, if we are running any, anything that's after hours, which is after 6 o'clock, or on a weekend, yes, we're paying overtime for all our custodial time.
So regardless of whether or not they've hit 40 or not, right?
Well, they're always overtime once you hit 40, right?
They're going to hit 40 no matter what, with their normal job.
Their regular hours, but I can't really steal their hours from what they're supposed to be doing, because we can't get the buildings cleaned. Otherwise, I need my custodians to do their regular work, so anything here is extra.
Brett, do you have a question?
The only question I had was looking at fiscal year '25, is that, that number there is still through April, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that deficit number is going to increase still in the next two months.
Yeah, well, we're definitely using some projections, we don't, you know, it's hard to know exactly what days we're going to hire somebody. I didn't want to put a number in here that overinflated the cost, so that's why we use these numbers tonight. But you're right, it could be higher.
That's still going to probably be higher, given two more months, so. Okay, thank you.
So I guess the main point of this slide is, well, the main point is, we're improving our budget situation by the fees now that we're charging. If we go back just a few years, we weren't charging anything.
Two years.
Two years, two years. We weren't charging anything for our class ones at all, zero, and we were considerably over or under what we needed to cover our costs. Because, I mean, people need to remember, when we have, people come in that's after hours, you know, yes, we get money from the state of Minnesota to run our schools, but that's for our education of our students. So now we're turning on lights and air conditioning or heating and whatever, that's all extra costs that we wouldn't have otherwise, so we're just trying to cover that cost. Here, we're not trying to make a profit, we're just trying to cover our cost going forward.
And just to be very clear for the public, so the fiscal year '25 number, the loss of, you know, 215 right there, that's what the current fees, and then with the proposed changes in '26, we'd be looking at, you know, 24,000, roughly breaking even.
Yeah, that's our goal, is to break even.
Yeah.
And they say it could be a little bit up, a little bit down, that's all projections.
We're not trying to make any money, we're just trying to stop taking money out of our general fund.
Correct.
But leveraging our existing staff and not looking at alternative staffing models. I mean, you could have a weekend and evening team, or an activities team, and then we're not paying over $688,000 in headcount costs, but that's a separate conversation. Go ahead.
This is, just to clarify, this isn't general fund, this is LTFM money, right?
LTFM is only maintenance. No, this is general.
This is general funds.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So that would be a good question. Employ youth?
It's not my place, I'll defer to you guys on, because obviously, there's logistics with finding staff that are willing to work evenings and weekends, and I'm assuming the consistency of hours might be different, but that's a separate conversation. But right now, our labor costs for this year is $680,000, and we got that number because it's generally overtime or double time.
On the custodial side?
On the custodial.
On the regular staff? No, they're regular.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, for the casual staff?
Devon's team, they're, I mean, they're working full-time, but they're mainly working their hours, right?
So it's just a custodial staff, which is the 380,000?
And remember, and keep in mind, I mean, it'd be a nice idea to bring in a different crew, but remember, we have a custodial union here, and that is their job to clean, so we can't bring in a different crew to do their cleaning for them. That's not, that's not something we can do.
But isn't this outside the scope of school hours? I mean, it's outside of, this is a separate, it's not like. I mean, it's outside of, this is a separate, it's not like we're doing education. I don't understand why we couldn't use...
I think you're talking about the overtime hours, right? Because, like, we're not taking away from their typical forty hours that they get a week.
Correct.
He's specifically talking about the overtime hours and...
Which is after...
My thought process is why can't we be creative with that and use, like, students and do work-based learning and have them, you know, do things like that? You know, let's help everybody out, but, you know, that's a dream.
So I guess the question is, are they entitled to do the work under their contract? Right? And I don't know what the question, that sounds like that's what Bill's saying. Yeah. Maybe they like the overtime and contracted for that. Brenda?
Right. We cannot outsource outside of job description that is already in union. Otherwise, we will have issues with union increases and probably arbitration.
Okay.
Well, we can post positions and hire additional staff, but they could be high school students if they apply and are qualified, but we cannot outsource.
Got it. So the only path away is to hire more custodians and make their hours evenings or weekends, potentially. Okay. Just a thought, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because it costs us more, and if we want to break even, how do we lower our expenditures? Because if we increase our revenue, we're increasing taxes. Like, we're charging other people more money to use for our facilities. So, but I'll look at to see what the price adjustments are for class one, because class one is more important to me, because I think that's all of our district people, right? So class twos and threes.
Yeah, your point is, I mean, if we can reduce our expenses, we can also keep our costs down for our class one.
Right. And just as a side here, we don't really have places in Lakeville for people to rent facilities. Like, we don't have a community center, we don't have any of those spaces. So really, our district-level buildings are what the community is using.
I just want to add one thing. I know you said brevity is good, I'm just going to add one point.
This is not your fault, so...
No, I understand, but I just want to make sure, because you bring up a lot of different things that have been talked about, but have not seen longer ways to light. And that is generally because for majority of the year, not now, because we have so many buildings under, offline for projects, but for almost the entirety of our school year, minus maybe a month and a half, all seven buildings, seventeen buildings are used six days a week, and five of them will be used at least seventy percent of the time on Sundays. So the logistics for all those large events and for everything that are local groups that we've mentioned a few times depend on those facilities for that evening and weekend use throughout the entire school year, including in those buildings where they're closed on the weekends.
And can I say thank you for doing all that? Because I can imagine the work it is to try to schedule that for every day, hour by hour, to have the staff to have the buildings open and available to the community. So thank you to you and your team.
Thank you. Lots of partnerships. All right, we can't leave quite yet. Sorry. Oh, well, because we're looking at the wrong one, that's why. See? All right, I just wanted to give you some comparisons that I promised. And these, Lakeville is on the far left on this bar graph. We are, our far class ones is ten dollars and thirty cents an hour, which is extremely low. That is a flat rate across every single space within our district. So regardless of how much time a custodian or grounds crew will need to prep a space or clean up a space, it's a flat usage fee. We call that a usage fee for our class ones. We use multiple different districts, and then I do have a raw data comparison right there, so you can see that there. Every district does things a little different, their classifications might be a little different, I mentioned that earlier. So understanding how other districts work, working with their facility coordinators and managers is a big part of what our team does. So that is where that data there came from. And I think we are to the final slide. So recommended updates that are being brought. Number one would be the rental rates that we've discussed this evening. Number two is to note that equipment use fees have been added to the addendum. Three is events where custodial has been aside due to the size of the function or the function being outside of building operational hours and holidays will be assessed an additional two hours of custodial beyond what the user group end time is to assist in covering full custodial costs for that event. Number four is elementary use requests will require user group to provide their own hall monitor for their group. If they do not, they will be charged a fee and a supervisor will be assigned. So with that said, that is the updated. I don't know if you wanted to mention anything there other than we put some final notes in, and it's, increasing fees is not something that we want to jump at, but it's necessary from what leadership has directed me to bring to you, to support extending the building access and to try and do it in a financially responsible way, according to the constraints or the resources we have, however you look at it here in Lakeville.
Director Thompson.
Yeah, I mean, so if you go back to the data slide, that was super helpful for me. I think it's, it's really interesting just to, oh, I'm looking at a different one. I'll go back to the previous one with all the numbers. Yeah, that makes sense of that, that we're ten dollars and thirty cents, and you're looking at Shakopee who charges fifty dollars just for the auditorium use. So when I think of the auditorium, the lecture hall, and the cafeteria commons, what is your proposal for those three again? Were there, was there going to be an increase to C1 for those?
For C1, yeah. For each of those, there would be an increase. I don't want to misstep. We were, these numbers were worked on very quickly yesterday, we'd want to pull that up.
Okay.
But for the auditoriums, I can tell you that all three auditoriums have a different hourly rate proposed. Kenwood would be at forty-five, Lakeville North would be at fifty-five, and Lakeville South would be at sixty-five. And that is because of what the space offerings are within each of those auditoriums.
Yep.
And the upkeep and the equipment and needs that are in those spaces.
Okay. So when I see the cafeteria, the lecture halls, the auditoriums, that they go up, the impact to a group, you know, would be consistent for all of them. So there'd be, whether it be a thirty dollar increase or a forty dollar increase, or whatever the numbers are. Where I've got, so you're going to have to help me out, was I figure out how to explain this. If you are a football team, and you are using the football field, and you're just using the field, and we increase the cost of that field by five dollars, so it's fifteen, they pay fifteen bucks for that. But if you are a basketball team or a volleyball team, and you're using a court, I don't know if it's fifteen dollars to use that court or half of a court. And so when we move it to fifteen, because the volume that they may use that court and the number of courts that they may use is a basketball, would a volleyball team, where their costs percentage-wise go up higher than a, another class one, you know, organization, because the frequency isn't as high, their percentage is actually increases lower. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, and I want to address it, in answer to it, in a simple way that probably you'll want more discussion at some point in time or tonight. But first of all, fifteen, that's not a quoted thing quite yet. There are some spaces that are fifteen, majority are moving to twenty that are the basic uses, but I'm not going to speak specifically to those because I don't, we don't have that in front of us this moment, it was something for the board. When we first started charging, the prior superintendent met with different groups and explained, you're asking about something that's apples to oranges, specifically because of the intent of what the use is and what is needed. So we look at it from an operating standpoint, what is needed to prepare the space. So we have people contact us on a regular basis. We need X, Y, Z fields lined by this time, by this date, for this amount of people, and our grounds crews contract, you know, they leave it to. So they have a lot of things they have to do for the school day and everything else, and now we add a ticket in for them to be able to get all the preparations done. So all of those types of thoughts and planning went into what our fees look like, considering what I know other districts do and how they work with their FPP and their custodial and grounds teams and that partnership. So that, is it going to be, is it going to be more costly for them? That would be on how they plan to do that, and that's not within anything in my purview and my role to ever direct them on that.
So I think where I'm trying to get to is that if you're in class one, you are an organization that supports our district, and if you use the facilities the same as the previous year, but because of the rate change model, one organization, their costs go up maybe twenty percent, but another organization, their costs may go up eighty percent, but it's the same usage. And so I don't know how that impacts those other organizations, because obviously, those costs will then eventually trickle down to the residents of our community. And so I think my, where I might be leaning towards is, how do you make our class one increases percentage-wise fair and same? And I don't even know if that's even, if that should be an option, but, you know what I mean?
And I think what Devin is saying, though, is these costs that we're charging are related to the actual expenses incurred for those specific areas. So like in, like a gym, I mean, you're going to have electrical costs related to the AC, to the lighting, to the custodians cleaning it up. But a field might be more premium, but you still have costs related to whoever's managing that outside. So it's not like we're necessarily, you're not picking and choosing like, hey, we're going to charge a premium over here. You're just tying it to the actual costs that we're incurring.
That, and going off of district comparisons that I have here, and then about fifty other districts that I also pulled information on, a majority of districts do have a, not a flat fee for their class one, but remember, all districts will decipher what class one entails. Some districts do hold their BTOs and boosters underneath them, and those districts are a little bit smaller, so they're able to manage that. However, they do that within the business office, I can't speak to that. We are, we are not a small school district. We're not a small community. And it goes back to the very beginning when I said my goal that I've been directed on from Director Holmgren to Director Porter to Superintendent Baumann has been, make sure things are accountable, make sure things are consistent, make sure that every group is treated the exact same respectful manner, and get answers to them, and we're not going to please everybody. Because I have to say no a lot of times, because we, our buildings and grounds are in high demand and we have wait lists pretty much all school year long, in multiple buildings for multiple spaces.
So if our spaces in high demand, I mean, like, how far, how much are you increasing class two and class three? I mean, are they going to be the same, or are they going to be double the amount of class ones? Because if there's more, if there's an opportunity to push more off to the class twos and threes, like, that would be my preference.
Yeah, if you click on, there's a link on the, in the board book. If you click on it, you can pull up the proposed rate increases, and class two and three are, you know, significantly more per hour.
I want to just point out, so what you just said, Director Thompson, that would be opposite of the direction that leadership for the tenure that I've been here, because we want to make sure that our local groups, and this is, again, the verbiage that's been given to me, is that our local community feels welcome to be able to request to use your spaces and our associations to build and grow and provide, whether it's athletic or fine art, opportunities, that they have a place to do that. And many school districts have that same desire, and they have rates placed in similar to what we have now in the proposed item.
I just want to say, I think with what you're proposing, it seems like an excellent proposal, just in terms of looking at these numbers and kind of right sizing us in terms of the quality of our facilities, while also keeping us very competitive with other, just districts that are probably pricier than our facilities. So it seems like a good middle ground, so I think it looks great.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, Brian. It's tempting to say, let's just charge class two and three more, you know, to reduce the cost for class one, but then you're going to need them to use the facility more to kind of offset that.
They're our community too. I mean, it's not...
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
But, I mean, a lot of these nonprofits who are in class two are going to be from our community and potentially...
Potentially.
Yeah.
The idea of running, though, at, you know, trying to stay cost neutral, especially considering it's our general fund, number one bucket there, but like, I mean, we want, we want that to be more neutral, I think. I mean, I think that's better overall for us. I mean, we want everybody to use it, we want them to have access to it. I mean, there are costs associated with it. Either we absorb it and have to just figure out where we come up with more money, which we can't make more widgets, we can't tell kids to come and enroll here.
So how do we find ninety-two thousand dollars more? Because that's a whole FTE. Like, that's another person that we can bring up, potentially two. And so when I think of the model, I mean, would it be reasonable to ask what would be a net neutral model, and what pricing do you need us to approve to get us there? I mean, are you...
Well, I think that's the proposal.
I know, but I see the fiscal year '26, it says we're going to be short ninety-two thousand dollars.
No, no. Twenty, we're going to, twenty-four thousand is on the positive side.
Yeah, go back a slide to...
Positive. Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking. Think it.
Any other questions?
Thank you. And just for clarity, we will, this is coming back in a couple of weeks for final approval, so, or a vote.
For clarity, so the FY '26 is with these increases then, in terms of...
Correct.
Based on the proposal before us? Okay, thank you.
Does the board have any desire to see what a labor structure model might look like to reduce the three hundred and eighty thousand dollar custodial overtime double time costs?
I mean, I think that could be adjusted by, you know, Devin has a...
If you hired another person or two and have them dedicated to evenings and weekends as part of the contract or part of the agreement, like, we could potentially save how much more? I don't know.
Well, those costs will still be there, though, in my, from what we've talked about. I'll speak to it.
I understand what you're saying, that we could hire somebody else and not be paying overtime. But right now, we have positions that actually run Tuesday through Saturday, we can't fill them, nobody wants to work them. We have zero in those positions, they're just open.
Well, is it also possible that some of the people who are getting over, like, that's part of the appeal of the position is having opportunity for extra hours? Is that an advantage of some of these positions too?
Well, there's always be overtime for our custodials. But at the same time, when you talk about hours, we wouldn't have enough hours to put a, you know, if we only work evenings or maybe on a Saturday, we can't even get them to forty hours. There's not even a full-time position. So I had to remember that, too. But like I said, we cannot get people to work Saturdays on a regular basis.
Sure.
Now, they'll step up and they'll pay, you know, they work overtime, you know, every third week or so. We've been doing pretty good at asking for volunteers and keeping it full, but there has been nights where we had a cat's night event because we don't have any custodial time that'll come in and work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Board discussion on the addition regarding hiring policy and guidelines. We talked about this a little bit, or started the conversation. Brian, I don't know if you want to jump back into it?
Yeah, and yeah, let's jump into this one. This has been an observation of mine over the past couple of years, and obviously, at the, a couple of years ago, when we had to do a reduction in force or a reduction in the budget, we tried to figure out, how do we, how do we maximize and optimize our budget for our community? And so I think at that time, I was, I was made aware that, you know, the steps and lanes model that the, that school districts offer, and obviously, as a community member, like, it's not something everybody knows, you know? So based on, when you become a teacher, you get an entry level starting wage, and as you earn additional credit, college credits, and your master's degree, you increase your compensation. And then based on how many years of experience you have, you increase your compensation automatically. So it's not like something you have to get sign off or approval. I'm assuming you do at HR to validate that you've done those courses and use your service, but the range is fifty-one thousand dollars to ninety-seven thousand dollars. And then the middle point is seventy-five thousand dollars. And so when we think about the eight hundred and fifty teachers that we have, and we think about other bargaining units as well, how do we want to make sure that, do we have the right allocation mix of staff? And I think about two years ago, when we had the seven million dollar deficit issue, we asked for numbers to ask, hey, how many people are in these categories? How many people in our community, or of our staff, are in certain buckets? How many people in our community, or of our staff are in certain buckets? And based on, I think, the data that we got about two months ago, and now I believe it, it will be different because of recent additions that, that they came on board, we've got a total of 846 teachers that I see, that we received the, the data about two months ago. And then of those 806 teachers, we've got about 311 of them in the very last step, and the highest step possible, and the highest education possible, making $97,000. And, and so, when I think about the allocation mix of our, of our district, like how many more can we afford at the highest step and the highest lane possible? And so, I think there's value in having experienced teachers here, but I also think that we have to be mindful of how we spend our budget, and give our district an opportunity for, you know, newer teachers to kind of be a part of our, our, our school district and grow within. And so, again, like I shared earlier, I like the idea, just visually, and again, in a, in an ideal world, it's like, it's never going to be, ideally, you want one-third in your entry level, one-third in your middle bucket, and one-third in your higher end. And if you do a total salary count of all of that, divide that by the number of staff that you have, you know, the, ideally, you want an average roughly around, from what I see in the current model, $75,000 is, is what we ought to be, let me rephrase that, is the middle spending dollar amount. Now, as it sits today, I believe, as I look at our district, and Bill, you can tell me if I'm mistaken here, but when I look at the cost of our staff that we have, the current average salary for a Lakeville teacher is sitting at $86,900. I mean, that's, we'll round up and say 87. And now, the highest step is 97, but the, the current average is 80, $87,000. Now, if the median is 77, that is a $10,000 difference. And if we've got 850 teachers, and we're spending $10,000, was it 12? Oh, thank you. $12,000 above the, the middle point, again, that's the experienced teachers that we have, we're spending $10 million more than maybe we could be spending. And, and so, if you take that $10 million, and I'm going to arbitrarily divide that by $75,000, assuming newer teacher benefits, I'm just, and Bill might be like, that number's low. But, but that's, that's 100 teachers more we could have, which would lower class sizes, which could help divvy up the amount of, of work, and, and with mentorships and a variety of different things. So if, if there aren't any guard, guardrails right now, for our hiring managers at our elementary schools and middle schools to say, here's where we need you to be within the budget, and they just hire whoever they want to hire, eventually, we might get to a model where our current salary is above and beyond 87, and we just, we can't afford it. You know? So that's, that's, go ahead.
Yeah, just the 87 number is probably low too, just because you're not counting in longevity bonus too.
No, I'm not, right. Yeah, I mean. If you're here for, what, 15 years as a, as a Lakeville teacher, I believe it's 3,500 longevity pay? There's like a bonus pay of like.
Goes up higher too though, but.
Yep.
It's, it's more than that.
Okay, it's more than that. So, so if you're here for, for 15 years, you get a longevity pay, like an extra bonus, like, hey, thanks for staying with Lakeville. And then you're here for, for 20 years, I believe it's 8,000, a little bit more higher than 8,000. But the bottom line is that we've, you've got, you can, you're making over $100,000. And we have a current average salary that's on the higher end. And if we're not going to do anything about it, and there is no oversight or monitoring of this, are we going to put ourselves in a position in the next couple of years? So, go ahead, Director Baker.
So I, I love your scenario, that's a perfect world scenario, because it, I, just as a hiring manager, when I, I mean, and granted, I, I'm hiring for special ed, but I'm also looking at other positions. We don't have that many applicants for some of those positions. So you may have like a PE teacher, and that's a very specific license, you may only have one applicant, so you don't have that choice. But I also think there is, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, that there's not parameters around some of these hiring principles, but when I work with principals within the buildings, like we're looking at like our teams. And if we have like a second grade teacher position open, and we maybe have 10 applicants, right? But we know that every single teacher that we have in that grade is a new teacher, we're probably not going to hire another new teacher, because we really need the experience to help round that team out. So I mean, it's more than just like looking at some of those things, it's building the team. And, and I also want to point out that there is an abundance of research around teachers in the classroom, and you can have the perfect curriculum, and all the resources, and all the highest technology, but it's the teacher in the classroom that, that makes the most difference, not any of the bells and whistles. So if you don't have the experienced teacher in front of the kids, it, it doesn't matter what curriculum you're using, you're not going to get results. So I, I just think that there's a balance with that. Like I understand where you're coming from, but I also know that I was really, I, I just have watched like some of, and I've talked with some of our principals that are doing hiring within Lakeville, and I'm encouraged that we're, we're starting to see a few more applicants. I think the last few years, I've been very discouraged by the amount of applicants that have been coming to Lakeville. So I'm excited to see that we're getting more of this staff coming back, because I feel like our morale has been low, and then, you know, people, teachers talk to other teachers, and then the word spreads around, and then all of a sudden, our applicant pool goes down to nothing. Like, we want to be able to have a healthy pool of candidates, that we can choose the best person for that position, you know, the, the best person to fit in with that team. I, I just think that, yeah, we, we may be getting some, some people on the higher end, but then when I look at a PE teacher, like, if you think in the grand scheme of things, how many PE teachers do we need versus like first grade teachers? Right? Or elementary teachers? Like the, the need is more for like that, like a general elementary ed teacher than a PE. So you just, it's hard to find some of those types of teachers. So I just think, you know, I get what you're saying. I wish we had that many applicants, so that we always had the choice, but sometimes it's going with the pool of candidates that you have in front of you, and trying to balance it out for your team.
Just a second.
Let me come back to that.
Carly's been waiting.
I was just going to say, I feel like we're talking in assumptions, and so it might help for Brenda, or perhaps our superintendent, to talk about how they approach this, as opposed to like us.
They don't have a budget. We talked, we've, we've had this, I think.
Yeah.
Can we have a point of clarification?
Well, we used.
Do we have an applicant shortage right now in terms of, like, the general pool of things that we go for? Like, like are we, like, do we struggle with a general teacher, a fi-ed teacher? Like, are those struggles, we talked about sped, we know that that's an issue, and specialty stuff is, that's a different discussion. But do we struggle when it comes to, say, we have a second grade teacher position open? Is that a hard position to fill? Or is this the conversation that maybe we should be having, saying, we do have a, a more senior staff around them, maybe that is the position, we should be putting guardrails in, and saying, we should bring in somebody on the lower end of the pay scale? However, we do that, whether they're an experienced teacher who takes less money, or it's a new teacher who comes in lower on the, on the experience level, that I think is the bigger question, because you can't put in a blanket guardrail.
I think he's asking Brenda, just to clarify, if we could, yeah.
So generally speaking, for our elementary ed positions, I would say we have typically a pretty decent applicant pool. Again, it's going to be your special ed positions, high school math and science positions, that are a little more difficult to fill. I think that since we did get our staffing and postings out earlier this year, I have seen improvement in those areas as well, the difficult to fill positions. But that doesn't mean we're getting a ton of applicants for special ed in some of those high school positions. So it, you could also, I, I think Director Baker addressed this, you, you could get, you know, a handful of applicants, say for high school math and science, that you have teachers who have all of the years of experience and the education, and then someone who would be lower on the salary schedule, and they're, they're, they're just not the right fit for the position. And you really need to make that decision based on who is going to be best in the classroom. That's not always true. But if, if your applicant pool is shallow, it, it makes it very difficult for the difficult to fill position.
Well, and not to mention the, the licensure requirements that we're up against too. So, you know, we may have three candidates, and maybe one of them doesn't have like a license in the field, and we'd love to do an out-of-field placement, but state statute says that if there's a licensed candidate that applies against them, and maybe they're the one that's clear on the high end of the, we have to hire that person. We are required to hire that person if they are qualified for that position versus the one without a license. So you come up against some of those things as well.
Yeah.
So, so 100% agree. And, and there are going to be certain roles that warrant a higher compensation because of the market conditions, based on whoever it may be. But I, I think we can all agree, like, every single role isn't at that level. And so, you're going to have a certain pop, pop group of, of teachers that are going to be on the higher end, there are going to be in the lower end, they're going to be in the middle. And that, and that goes back to what you shared earlier, where if you've got, you know, younger or newer teachers in a particular grade, having an experienced teacher might make sense. But when you aggregate that out, it ought to be, you know, still generally in the middle versus a, versus the upper end of the band. I mean, right now, again, looking at the data, our current salary is 86,000, our median is 77, and we've got a $12,000, well, maybe it's 10.
I said 75.
Did I say 70? Oh, I'm sorry, it is, yeah, it's 75,000. The median is some, the middle point is 75, the highest end is, is 97. And our average, when you look at all of our salary totals, divide that by the FTE count, is 86,000. Again, going, going back to, well, are we leaving 10,000, $10 million on the table to bolster our elementary staff, our middle staff, lowers class sizes, but not, but not disreg, disregarding those, you know, roles that, that warrant a higher pay? I mean, I'm not saying we can't hire those individuals, but could we provide as a board, should the board provide the district guidance, saying, we want you to be in the middle point, we want you to strive to be in the middle point, with a plus or minus 5% variance, so that we don't have this wide swing of folks in the 86,000, or for, for our average pricing to be in that range? And so, I, I don't know, but i- if I had an open rec at my company, let me rephrase that, that's not my, at my work, we have a budget. We have a budget of how much we can spend on a particular role. And if I have more senior people on my team, there's a, there's a high probability that I'm not going to get approved for that requisition to be another senior person, and, because I only have so much of a budget to work with. We only have so much of a budget to work with. And so, when I see earlier today, when we have, you know, math teachers coming in at a MA, you know, MA plus 60, step 16, which makes sense, because they're specialized maybe in, in that particular space. But if we've got a, back to Director Baker's comment, a gym teacher who's making, is it, is it MA 15 with a step 10, and that's kind of like 70, some odd thousand dollars, and you've got an MA, a reading interventionalist, interventionalist coming in? I, I just, where, if we're not going to provide guidelines, is it our role to provide guidelines? And if we don't, what happens when it's too late?
Yeah, and just let me jump in here. I mean, the way our, our system is structured, I mean, with the lanes, once you hit 15, you can be at 15, or the top, top lane for 20 years, you know? And so, we're naturally going to lean towards the top side. And if you're not careful, we could all be, I mean, we have a 94% retention rate with our teachers right now. So we're keeping a lot of our teachers year after year, which is a good thing. And ideally, yes, we'd have teachers that are extremely experienced, and they would all be that way. But financially, and this is what Brian's going towards, we just can't afford it. You know, if we hire the most experienced and most qualified every time, we're going to get into a situation where we don't have money to pay them at some point.
So, that's my question.
Doesn't that kind of explain though, why we're sitting higher than the middle level?
We should be na, we should be a little higher than the middle level, I think, just because they're a year longer.
Because we have so many teachers retained, that we're naturally going to lean higher than middle.
Well, because, yeah, I mean, even if you broke it up a third, a third, and a third, I mean, once you hit 15 years, you're going to be there for a while, if you stay, right? So even if we hired, you know, somebody here at seven years, another seven years, they're already at the top end, right?
Well, and that's the challenge of comparing this to like a business, where you have probably higher rates of turnover and changes in positions versus when someone's hired.
We have higher rates right now. I feel like we, I think we brought in 120-plus new teachers this year. I mean, and that's.
But that's a lot of retirements too.
Yeah.
Isn't that turnover in the same sense that she's talking about?
Then if it's retirements, are we backfilling them?
Well.
With a model that, that, that's fiscally responsible as we continue to grow? Because we bringing in an MA 60, step, step 15, we, that, and, and from a business sense, that's considered a liability for the next 20, 30 years, that we are responsible for paying that, that number until they choose to move on.
Isn't it the case though, that, mind, Bill, you would have this, or maybe you have it in your head, maybe you don't, if you don't, I apologize. But like, when we talked about how many of our teachers that are at the very bottom right, or, right, bottom right?
63%.
A huge percentage, right? So, we can't just hire new, you know, if we have, that's our, that's such a huge percentage of our teachers at the, like mathematically, it won't work out. We can't only hire people who are freshly new.
Yep.
Or it's going to create a problem over time.
What, why would that be?
I mean, I, I do appreciate like where you're saying, in terms of what the spirit of that would be, but we can't have such lopsided, like highly tenured.
Well, it's lopsided right now. It's, it's highly tenured right now.
Can you flush that out a little bit, Carly? I'm, what do you mean by we can't hire?
Well, I just mean, if we were only to, let's say we have 63% of our staff are at the highest end, and we just spend the next however many years just hiring new teachers, or that are kind of new out of college, it's going to, I would imagine that that creates problems in the system, that you have highly experienced and very fresh, and not kind of an equal distribution. I would imagine you want some that are in the middle.
Yeah.
Grade. So it, it would, I think from a hiring perspective, it makes sense to try to hire the way you're speaking, but the fact of the matter is, we already have 63% of our staff sitting at the very high end. So it makes it tricky to get toward that middle.
Right. And, and I don't anticipate us getting there overnight. It, it's one of those where I would look to the administration, what is your plan? And what is your pathway to get us towards a, a metric that we could look at from a financial lens and ask, are we being efficient and optimizing our dollars? Or do we, or are we as a board going to commit and say, yes, our average salary is going to be this, and this is what we're going to pay? And then if we want to hire more teachers, then we have to go to the public, get additional levies passed, so that we can hire additional teachers, if need be, at the range that we feel that our community is, is needing.
Well, and I think you're saying, we should be intentional with the hires, you know, setting parameters on, and I agree, can't all be brand-new teachers right out of college, there has to be some additional experience. But by, you know, setting parameters, we can adjust the budget a little bit, where we even pay the teachers more, you know, because we're not so top-heavy, so then all of the teachers get paid a little bit more, because there's more funding available. As opposed to right now, the 63% kind of dominate, you know, that portion of the budget, whereas if we're able to diversify that a little bit, you know, all lanes would get a little bit more, so.
So, to that end, as another kind of point of information, like what's our current mix when we're bringing in, you know, say, you know, we got a, a new year coming in here, and 100 new teachers come in? Like, what's our, you know, macro view? Is it 20% of them are new teachers, never taught before, coming in on one of the first couple steps? And then, you know, we got 40 in the middle, and another 40 on the top end? Or is it flip-flopped? Or how, how does it work for us right now, if you were to say, kind of break it out from more of the, and, and I, I honestly, like, if you can, leave out like specialty stuff, and positions that we know are completely, like the special ed stuff, like we, if we can't fill it, and it's hard to fill anyway, like, let's, like, kind of leave that out. But like, in terms of more general education, you know, I'm thinking K through 5, you know, middle school, high school, like, if, if we're looking for a new teacher to fill a position, backfill, normal classroom, like what's our mix, I guess, in terms of hiring?
Okay, so without pulling the data, I, I'm going to guess that in your elementary level positions, it's probably pretty close to the average. I would say the majority of them. I would say the majority of them are probably pretty close to that average, maybe not all. I also do want to clarify a couple of things that, that I heard. So not, not every new hire that you see is a resignation. I think like you mentioned, some are retirements, some are resignations, people leave the profession or they go to another school district. And some of them are teachers that we have on a variance or an out-of-field placement where we are required to post those positions again. We're also required to post positions if, if a teacher was hired after a certain date in August, we're required to post those positions again. So not all of them are necessarily going to be new hires, they'll be, the same person will probably be placed in those positions. So I just want to clarify that. And then also, because I, I don't want anyone to inadvertently overpromise and underdeliver, I heard a lot about the potential, if we hire lower on the pay scale, that that could potentially decrease class size. And just keep in mind that class size also has to do with space. So we don't have the space that is necessary. We can't necessarily have, it's not with class size, just because we're hiring people lower on the salary scale.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
I appreciate that clarity.
Yeah, without pulling the data, I don't.
But what I heard was that it's the middle, like it's, it's not, it's, it's the middle. It's not the lower end, meaning that after seven years, generally those middles are going to be on the top end, which then it is, which, which is, which, which is going to cause a financial, you know, issue for us seven years from now for the next board that, that will be here. So I, I guess, without jeopardizing the need and the compliance and, and, and market conditions, are our supervisors or hiring managers, are they giving, are they given a budget to say, you can hire a staff, but here's your budget? And if the answer is no, should we ask for that?
So you guys did it last year, didn't you? I mean, you guys put a restriction on what?
We did, go ahead.
And how did that work? I mean, did that handcuff you too much, Brenda, on the hiring side?
Can I address two things?
Yeah.
Can I go back to Director Nicholson's question? Because Bill pulled up some data on where hires, where they came in last year?
Yeah, so just to keep everybody in context, last year, I have, anyway, we, we hired 37 of our hires last year, or BA, so first line, right? We get to the MA level, 20 of our teachers were there, okay? And above that level, there's only six. Okay, so we, we did hire this past year, a lot of teachers above that name, we did that, they were all BA. So, and the average that we're using right now, the average that we see in salaries is an E3.
So, so from what Rachel Schell was giving you to us earlier, it has dropped. Okay, which is good. Now, that's a good news. But still.
She had one other point, hold on.
There was another question you had.
I don't remember what it was.
So maybe a point of clarification from the superintendent or Brenda, Bill, would be, is, so I know principals are involved in hiring, right? They're interviewing and deciding, are they set with a budget for their school generally? I mean, with, with consideration of special programs and things that you may have to?
Not for hiring. So the, the one word I heard earlier was requisition management or requisition administration. That's something we could look at. I think that with, when we talk about guidelines, which I welcome that conversation, we have to, any guidelines we have, and I think everybody could agree to this, has to be in compliance with labor law in the state of Minnesota, has to honor our agreed labor contract, however that is codified. We also, I think, have all said that our, what I call low density or hard to fill is, is going to have to be administered differently in order to have an expectation of hiring effectively for the needs of our students and, and families. And I think as long as any macro parameters are set there, they should also be attendant with the data that we do have and articulate that so that the board, public sees what that is. The description of, you know, one-third low, one-third mid, one-third high, but in the budgeting process for the school system on the macro scale, we're looking at where our wage costs are for both salary and benefits, because I don't think you can disassociate those, understanding that the salary part is, is, is a critical part, but the benefit element of it, I think, should not be lost in this conversation. As far as issuing macro guidance, I, I do want to look at requisition control management method, because that could, that could have some promise for us in, in our ability to be able to issue that guidance at the, at the school level or programmatically within directors who are doing hiring within the staff. So those are just my comments, and I don't know if that's helpful at all.
It does, I mean, it does make sense that if I am a principal and I'm looking at, I'm interviewing people, I want the best qualified person, right? And so to put some guardrails on that in terms of.
Yeah, if I could just also, best qualified, I think the, the more appropriate term is best fit, because there are circumstances that Director Baker, I think, spoke to that I think are important elements that would, would impact. So qualified, best fit, I think, kind of got to be synergized. But on a macro scale from a, a governance and/or an operational internal control, I think the, the points that are being made here are solid for us to be able to look at and say, at least what's the picture, which we have provided, but maybe provide it more transparently to all.
Well, and some of the things that you've talked about with Dr. McDonald's new role in terms of kind of consistencies across the system, how hiring is approached at schools.
So let me ask just from, historically, was there a vote in 2023 to limit the ranges that you're going to hire? Okay. Because if we were going to do something like this, are we talking about a vote, written resolution, or a policy? I mean, just, just for providing guidance for the district moving forward?
It was part of like the, the district reduction that, that we went through, and it was like one of the line items. So, you know, we were going through all the reductions and we just approved it as like a, like one vote total thing. It wasn't like just an individual thing. There wasn't like a resolution with it, it was just part of the, the package on what was recommended.
But was, but was it a one-time deal? Or was it something that we assumed would continue on perpetuity?
It was just, that, it was just for that year.
She said it's outside.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess if we're looking at something that's going to be, you know, part of the system that we're developing here, do we want it to be a board policy, you know, that we establish for the district, you know, that has details as far as, hey, these are exceptions to this policy? You know, obviously there is going to be, you know, ability to bring things to the board if you need an exception to the policy itself for approval? Or is it just a vote with some guidance? Or is it a resolution that codifies it a little bit more?
I see it like the general fund. It's like, here's a general guideline, you hit a certain percentage, it triggers a whatever, you go above and beyond, and you put a remediation plan. And, and, but the guidelines have to be aligned with the values, the, the staffing needs, the market needs. Now, I'm not saying the middle point of $75,000 has to be our number, because, because I don't know. And so I, I think I'd look to the board and HR and teachers and, and the administration around what is the appropriate number? And then what is the action plan for us to get there? And how much of a variance are we going to allow as a board as we continue to, you know, as we continue to grow? So that, that's how I would think of it as.
I mean, so maybe if you're talking about comparing it to the general fund, I mean, maybe it is a policy that we talk to the district about, because we don't want to handcuff, you know, our administration in their hiring processes by making it too difficult or restrict them too much. So it'd be good to get their guidance as well, you know, if we're going to set guardrails essentially.
I, I feel like with the budget discussion, I'm sorry, you're after me, we got really specific percentage-wise. This to me feels like more in the spirit of what we're, the staff we would try to create. And so I would say anything policy-wise, I wouldn't recommend we be highly specific just because things are probably going to change year to year and needs are going to change year to year. And that's where I think we can't anticipate all of these exceptions that we're talking about, that how does, you know, does an exception then potentially violate policy? So I don't know if this is more like, this is a procedural thing that we're asking the, the administration to consider and help us under, better understand versus we need specific policy.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I'm specifically wondering, I mean, I know, I know that this discussion is around teachers, but I'm also thinking bigger picture-wise of, you know, there was a point in time where the school board had an audit committee, and it wasn't just teacher salaries that we looked at, it was administrative salaries, it was all of the different ones. And we would compare it to other districts to make sure that we were aligned with what other districts were offering so that we weren't so far above or, or anything like that. Maybe it's a bigger discussion about looking at some of those pieces as well.
I'd be 100% in alignment with that, looking at all bargaining units, because while we're looking, we're talking about just one, there are, there's a spectrum of, of the, of that range across the various bargaining units. I don't even know what the ranges for our principals are. I mean, there might be some that are on the lower end, and there might be one way above and beyond, like, like, but yet, so, things to think about.
Yeah, Brett?
I guess, thinking about it from a goals perspective, I mean, if we can try to put a goal that we want to have a, a healthy mix of people across the matrix, I mean, we could do something like that in terms of, you know, upcoming goals. Let's try to, you know, when we have, say, 100 people retire, exit the system, whatever, you know, you want to bring in some sort of a, you know, try for a 33, 33, 33 split on new hires, you know? And over time, again, if you're getting more people across the spectrum, might level us out a little bit. So, I mean, that kind of goes to what you're, you're talking about. I mean, if we set it as sort of a, a target for new hires or filling positions, if we can, and again, I think there has to be caveats, because we've talked about sped, specific credentials, licensure, et cetera. I, I think some of that, you're just going to have to bite the bullet and pay market rate. I mean, it is what it is, so.
The, the bottom line is resource management, that's all it is. And, and if we have the extra dollars, which I feel our mix today has an opportunity that we could gain some extra dollars, could we redeploy those resources in other areas that might be warranted? Digital media specialists, more paraprofessionals, more staff, more like, like.
Interventionists.
Yeah, and, yeah. And, and whoever's supposed to watch the kids outside when they play during lunch, you know, like, is there enough of those adults outside? So that, it, it gives us more flexibility, and it might be ideal for us as a board to provide some guidance on that.
I would be open to the discussion on that as long as we weren't targeting one specific group. I, I still feel like we would need to have a broader discussion about it with, with the other contracts that we have and other employee groups, because they wouldn't have the same potential to have those issues as well.
Do you mean as far as where we're hiring those employees and Director Baker?
I, I'm just looking at like, you know, when I review past documents that, that the board has had in, in previous years, you know, with the audit committee that, that was looking at all of the salaries that we had coming in and comparing that to, you know, other districts around, not just with like our MCA numbers, but with like our hiring numbers and, and where we're hiring people on contractually, what we're offering, what percentage we're increasing every year, just all of that specific data? Because I think like if we're targeting just the teachers, that doesn't seem equitable to me.
I was talking across the board personally. I, I was saying, you know, we should have a healthy mix of new blood into the system, people who are experienced, I think, across the board, personally.
The point I asked is because our, our other bargaining groups, the teachers have the largest salaries, correct? Our principals, I don't, I, I don't know exactly, but I think they have four, four steps. Their paraprofessionals have two. So it's, it's, the teachers' salaries are going to be much different, that's why I was, right, asked that question. Yeah. Thank you.
You could have a third-grade teacher who's got a, a degree from, has her bachelor's degree and has been a first-grade teacher for 10 years in our district and make $59,401. I mean, that's step 10, or I think things start at step three, so maybe that's really eight years. But they're, they're, they're in the field, eight to 10 years roughly, and they're making less than $60,000, whereas a teacher who has a master's degree plus 60 additional college credits and have been here for, for 15 years, making $97,000. So that's a $40,000 swing. And, and so that is a wide range. And, and so I appreciate the experienced teachers, and I also appreciate those that have been in the field for eight years teaching, you know, first graders, but that's a $40,000 difference. And so how do we, as a board, ensure that we're being mindful in optimizing our community's dollars to make sure that we've got the right staffing, the right allocation mix, and maximizing what we have? That's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can have discussions with the district moving forward as far as what's the best way to look at this procedurally to set guidance, and we'll bring it back for more discussion and any vote before any action is taken. Any other comments?
Maybe this could be moved to the discussion in July, too, when we're talking about board goals.
All right, superintendent's report. Roll right along.
Don't we have the?
Oh, board reports?
Board reports and.
Zero-based budgeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll just share a couple of things. Was able to get out and look at, there's a lot of projects going around. I just encourage board members, if you're driving by and you see T-COS or you see, don't walk into Cherry View right now, or, well, Kenwood, there's a lot going on there. We just have a lot of projects, this is the season for projects, and where we have activities in buildings, too. I went over by Christina Huddleston and the kids out there in the field. Today was a beautiful day, by the way, if you didn't get outside, shame on you. Somebody asked me in passing today, how was the weather outside? And I said, well, it's the best day I think we've had in Minnesota in the last month. So hopefully you got out there. But the kids were just tearing it up and having a good time out at Christina Huddleston. I only jest about Cherry View, but if you've, if you go into Cherry View right now, you go in the main entrance, take a right, and there's this long trench being dug up there. So they got it taped off nicely and all, but might want to step by and take a look at that, see what it looks like. Sometimes that's fun. I don't know, I get into those kind of projects. So I, I just, if you can get around, please do. You're always welcome and invited to do that, and we got a lot going on in the district. That's my report. Thank you.
I'll just say I was picking up my boys at Eastview today from the summer adventures, and the kids there are having a great time. So, yeah, they're, the staff are doing a great job. Thank them.
I skipped the board reports in case there were any. No? All right. I think we're to Bill. Discussion on approval of the LTFM plan and 2026 budget.
Good evening, Chair Swanson, members of the school board, Superintendent Bowman. Tonight we get to talk about next year's budget. In, in your packet or I put on your, on your desk tonight, our final fiscal year '26, I shouldn't say final, this is preliminary. We always come back in the fall, once we get through our audit and through all our hiring, and give you a new budget with more accurate numbers, because we have a lot of assumptions built into this. Now again, this is the, this is the enrollment that we've been working on with our, with our budgets. When we look at the numbers, these numbers are coming out right, right where we thought they would, when we're finishing up this year. So we're continuing to use this. We will update these numbers again this fall when we see our October enrollments. to use this. We will update these numbers again this fall when we see our October enrollments. In the, um, in the book too, I just, I'll try to keep you abreast of some pages we're on, but that's on page five. You see a little more detail, not only by the totals, but uh, um, built out by the, by the grade levels. Okay, revenue. Um, here, here, go to page ten and you can see our, our revenues. We put a few more, a few more years back in the book than what you see up here on the screen, but you see, they didn't put that, they didn't fix it. Okay, we, we apologize for typo.
It's fixed online.
Oh, is it? Yeah, it's not here. So we, we did fix it today, but so, um, our, our increase on the state, you see there at three point three percent. That's a little bit more than the two point seven four the state gave us today. Yes?
Can I ask one question? So this is on page ten, but I just wanted to point out on page nine, um, in your notable changes for fiscal year twenty-six, you noted that um, with new funds from the legislature, the district was increasing counselor support at the high school level. Um, and knowing that we had talked about that as a board um, with the high school principals earlier in the year, I just wanted to make that point known to the public. Um, so I, I think, is that from to four or is it that?
Yeah, it's, it's one more, one more counselor in each of the high schools.
Okay.
We're, we're using the new state money, the, the student support money to pay for those.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to note that because it was something we had discussed.
And how long does that last? Just to make sure, like, it's something that we'll have to find funding?
That's ongoing, that's ongoing revenue at this point. Now, we talked about a little bit last time that the state of Minnesota during their, their, their budgeting process here the last few weeks, that that increase that we got slowed, but we still have more than we had from the year before. So we still have enough dollars to cover these two positions out of that new funding. Okay, where are we at? Okay, again, uh, just touch base, um, the, the, the property tax, you see that that's down this year. We talked about why that is, um, because of the, the change in our, or the slowing in our enrollment. You can see the details of our, our property tax levy on page forty of, of the book. Again, the federal sources were really back to the level we were before the pandemic. You see a very small change there of only thirty, thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, when you look at the other, you see that increase there about four hundred eighty-four. Most of that is actually revenue that we're receiving from investments, from cash that we have on hand. Now that we have a little more cash than we had in the last few years, we're actually gaining a lot more funds there. So that's helping us, um, actually fund some positions. So again, just as a reminder so the public can see, I mean, when we talk about, I think a lot of people think when they pay their taxes, they're paying the whole budget and they really are not. Most of the funds that we receive come from the state of Minnesota, but you can see that our budget from the community is about twenty-five percent of the funds that we receive.
I mean, technically the income taxes come through the state.
Well, you are correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so now looking at general fund expenditures, and this is by the object series. Our salaries and wages are going up by roughly five point seven percent is what we're projecting. This is a change of give or take six million. Um, you see that benefits are going up a heck of a lot more than the salaries. That is due to increased TRA percentages, uh, health insurance and the new, uh, tax that is being applied to everybody for the paid family medical act. Um, purchase services are going down. That is primarily driven by the special ed contractors. So we are actually sourcing those internally, those go into our salaries and wages. So that's why that little piece is going down. Supplies, this is primarily being driven by teaching and learning. This is, if I remember right, an off-cycle year for curriculum. So there's been less curriculum being purchased. Uh, equipment is heavily due to LTFM. We have fewer LTFM projects going on this year and other is primarily insurance related. So the main reason why we include this chart is just to give you the depiction of how much we actually spend on our students. So eighty-two percent of all of our expenditures are directly correlated to our students, which is a fantastic number in my opinion.
I think there's one more thing to point out when we talk about our expenditures or some things we added to the book that we haven't had in there before. If you, um, look at pages twenty-two through thirty-seven, um, that broke down expenditures per buildings, you'll see what's happening in those particular buildings. It's been, it's important to note that sometimes you see one building a little more than the other and that's mainly because a building has more senior staff than another building, or we might have a special ed education program more in one building than another. Um, we also have added, um, again, reports by program, page forty-one, you see that broke down a little more detail than the pages that we have on the front end and in, uh, you know, ten and eleven. And then on page forty-three through fifty, you see then it's broke down by object by program. So a little more detail for you to, to digest there. Now we look at our, our fund view, you see here that our assigned, our assigned amount is going down this next year. Um, that was mainly due to money set aside for some specific teaching and learning expenditures. So you can see from twenty-five to twenty-six, our total fund balance, you see that the increase there has slowed from the year before. But if you look at the unassigned number, you see that that's running, it's moving from thirteen million to fifteen and a half million dollars. So when we look at our fund balance percentage, you can see here that it continues to improve on going forward with a projected, uh, percentage at this point at seven point three percent.
Can we just stop and look at that a second? Because we were new board members when it was down there at the bottom and that was one of the toughest times. Um, so to see where we've went from there to now, that's amazing. So thank you to you and your team.
Okay. Nope, uh, one more. Uh, the, the general fund. And so we were able to, um, uh, we were able to save roughly, what, six, six million dollars in this current school year, correct? And that could be attributed to good weather, you know, staffing issues and, or staffing scenarios and a variety of other different factors. And the fiscal year twenty-six, uh, you know, we're, we're potentially saving about two and a half million. Um, potentially it could have been five if we weren't having to pay back the property taxes, right? But we actually gained that the previous year. So it ends up being a net, so that sounds about right. Um, I, I guess my question for you is, is like, do you anticipate the fifteen point five, the, the two and a half different, two and a half million dollar difference on the conservative side? And again, we can't control the weather, but if the weather is similar to last year, there's a potential where that could potent, you know, that could go up. I, I guess for me is like, how quickly can we get to, to twenty million dollars and making sure that we as a, as a community have at least three months of, you know, of expenditures to, to cover those costs, um, in the savings account? So like, are you, are you?
Okay, well.
How are you, are you, are you being conservative in this?
When, when we bring a, a budget to you, yes, we're bringing you a conservative budget. I don't expect it to be worse. Um, could it be a little better? Yes, we would hope so. Okay. But until we know exactly who we've hired and what our expenses are, we do not know.
And so you're budgeting right now with who we hire at, at a dollar rate that's in the middle or on the upper end? I mean, because like that plays a huge part too. So.
It's, what's, what's currently in the contract?
It's on macro, roll over.
Uh, the macro, yeah. Okay. Thank you for this. This is like, three years ago, we were in a very difficult position. Uh, lots of discussions and lots of information that, um, you know, that was probably, uh, you know, accurate and also some discrepancies. And to be where we are today, uh, to know that after three years, that we are in a much healthier financial position and, and knowing that they end up next year, after four years worth, we're, we're back to, well, not back yet, but you know, very close to being a very favorable, comfortable position so that we have more maneuverability as we move forward and, and as our district grows. So, good job.
Thank you. Okay, where are we at? Okay.
Okay, so looking at food service, as you guys know, um, at the end of fiscal year twenty-six, the state is going back to a three percent fund balance, um, or sorry, not three percent, three-month fund balance total that you can have. Uh, for us, that's roughly three million dollars, a little bit more than three million. As you can see, that's far above that. Um, our director, uh, Rizak for food service is doing a good job in trying to devise a plan to bring that fund balance down. Um, so I believe that we will be at a balance that is at state required levels towards the end of the year. We're just not quite there yet in this budget and we're going to get there and we're going to present that in the final budget.
Bill, um, I know that you had mentioned at one time that there were things in the legislative session that would allow us to move some of these funds around, did that not pass in the final budget?
Yeah, but there's some small pieces, um, that we're looking at and whether we can use those. And just an example, right now, in a, in a particular cafeteria, we're not allowed to use any of the cleanup in the cafeteria, any of the supervision in the cafeteria, out of food service funds. I ask them out of the general fund. So those are the things that they've kind of tweaked. We're trying to get exactly what we can and we can't do. But there's some, maybe some small help for the general fund.
When you say we can't, I mean, is that somebody, somebody has tried and the state said no? Or?
Actually, that's a good question because we just had a, we just had an audit from the, from student, for student nutrition. And there were some very small things that they made us change back that we were very surprised that it was a problem.
Case in point, in one of those, just for example on Bill, what Bill was talking about. So we had, uh, bought students badges, which were okay for them to swipe so they could purchase their meals. With those badges, we bought lanyards. Apparently we can't buy lanyards with food service funds. So that's just an example of how strict the food service piece is when it comes to federal requirements.
So you have them follow like the kindergarten class around without the lanyard and see if they can then approve the funds after that?
As ridiculous as it sounds, the, the bureaucratic process of that is any kind of your restricted funds and grants are probably even worse. Um, your audit, it's, it's auditable and that's the accountability measure. Um, so it's a thing, unfortunately.
All right.
Or fortunately, depending on your perspective.
So this is just a history of the food service fund balance. It's been pretty stable. We do need to bring it down and again, Director Rizak is going to devise a plan that we can accomplish that by the end of twenty-six. So looking at community service, um, I wish Steve was still here so I could commend him in person, but he left unfortunately. Uh, they're doing a fantastic job. They dug themselves out of the hole that they had in fiscal year twenty-three. They're now projected to be at seventy-six thousand at the end of twenty-six. Um, kudos to them for digging themselves out of that steep hole.
Just to be clear, that was COVID induced, uh, because programs all had to shut down in their revenue base, just to be clear.
Okay, now I'm going to shift gears a little bit. Uh, we need to take a few minutes to talk about LTFM. Um, in order for us to get authority, for levy authority in the future, I need you to, um, approve our plan. So part of the budget, we just hooked this together. Now, we've talked about this already, um, this spring. Um, these are the numbers. Actually, if you turn to page fifty-one and fifty-two, you can see the details of what we're doing in LTFM, um, in, in twenty-six. And you can see, we already have projects detailed down through twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So you can see that in twenty-seven, we're spending eighteen and a half million on our LTFM projects. And in twenty-eight, it goes up to nineteen and a half. Going forward, um, the, the variables that we're using is health and safety, an increase at three percent per year and our actual projects at five percent. That's the construction, um, increases that we're seeing right now going forward. And I put in the whole thing, very hard to read, um, but these numbers are based off the, the percentages I just gave you. And this is the spreadsheet that we send into the state of Minnesota, um, that they give us authority to move forward on. And I just wanted to just quickly touch base too, that part of this plan is to bond some money next spring, uh, about twenty-one million dollars, and that's used over the next biennium. So about a third of our dollars come through the general fund through our levy and two-thirds we bond and pay back through, uh, well, through levy also. But it, it spreads that cost out over several, several years. So we're not, we're not giving a huge increase to our taxpayers. Um, actually next month, we actually will bring forward a resolution to do future bonding so that we can have that ready for our levy, even though we won't borrow the money until we get to next April or May. Just for the next biennium.
And just to be clear, um, the levy that you're talking about, we don't need, um, stakeholder approval on that, right? That doesn't go on the ballot?
Correct. That does not, the, the state gives us authority to bond what we need to do our, uh, maintenance of our buildings.
Okay.
So again, now here's the building construction, because that's where those, that's where those bonds go into. And I'd say two, two-thirds of the expenditures come out of this particular fund. So you see they're under fiscal year twenty-six, under the, under other financing sources, about halfway down, you see that new borrowing there of twenty-one million dollars. Uh, so that fund balance of course goes up and it goes down because we use those funds. So if we see every other year, because we bond every other, other year, you'll see that fluctuation. Debt service fund, um, as I've said in the past, every year, um, the state of Minnesota allows us to levy actually a hundred and five percent of the actual dollars we need to make our bond payments. And we do that in case we have a group of people who don't pay their taxes or don't pay them on time. We don't want to be short of funds to make our payments. Um, but what happens, as you see, our fund balance is, is growing up a little bit. You'll see when we get to levy this fall that we'll actually do an under levy in the debt service area. Um, so we won't build that fund balance up. It'll actually bring it back down. Internal service fund, this is where all our self-insurance runs through, both our dental and our health. Uh, we've had this in place now for five years. We didn't have a self-funded health plan before that time, but you see that fund balance is growing very, very nicely. It's a very healthy fund where we're expecting about seven point six million dollars in that fund by the end of next year. Uh, we're really looking at trying to get that up to about twenty-five percent of our expenditure to really have a, a good number that we can use to, to help subsidize those premiums for both our employees and for the school district in the future. Um, but that number is about eight million. So we're, we're getting close, um, but it won't be too much longer. At the same time, though, our increase of five percent overall, um, going into next year is actually less than markets run at eight and nine percent. So we feel very good about that. Again, just a, a look at that, that, uh, fund balance and how it's growing. Now over, this is just a look now of all our funds put together. So you can see overall, um, we expect a, a fund balance around fifty million dollars out of all of our funds the end of, uh, twenty-five, and then we get to the end of twenty-six, that growing to about sixty-two million dollars. But the key, of course, is the top line, which we've talked about, where that fund balance is going to, uh, projected at this point about twenty-two point four million dollars. Um, so back to a very healthy point. We're back to where we were five years ago when we look at fund balance. Uh, with that said, any questions?
Director Thompson.
Hey Bill, can you, can you provide some guidance on the internal service fund? I, I see that at the end of next year, seven point six million in reserves. Um, when, is that the number that you want to hit where then we start to recalibrate what the health insurance premiums might be? Or like, what are you, what are you thinking?
Eight million.
Eight million? Okay, this is also another year.
It's about twenty-five percent of our premium.
Okay.
And that's about eight million dollars. So we're almost there.
Okay, close, close.
Are there any particular parts or expenditures, um, that we have that you're maybe less certain about or going to be paying particular attention to over this next year for this budget?
I wouldn't say there's something necessarily particular. I, like I said earlier, this is a conservative, uh, budget. So we want to make sure that all the staffing that we're bringing on, any new staffing, is not fall within, uh, the parameters that we have. So there, at this point, no, I don't have any red flags. Um, this fall, when we see our actual enrollment, we see our actual, um, staffing, then we'll have a better idea of where we are at.
I just want to point out, um, Chair Swanson, on page fifty-three, if you look at the appendix, which is the finance profile and benchmark, that compared to other districts, our enrollment size is eight, but our revenue and expenditures were ranked twenty-one. So we have more kids than everybody, less money coming in.
You're looking at page fifty-three?
Yeah, we're ranked as the eighth largest school district in Minnesota with twelve thousand, uh, students. Uh, but we are ranked twenty-first in total revenue that we can bring in and ranked twenty-first in total expenditures. And so ideally, one would want a top ten school district to be within the top ten in revenues and expenditures. That would provide additional services, additional, um, capabilities that we may not have compared to other, uh, districts. But as it sits right now, we are outside the top twenty, even though we are the eighth largest school district in our community. Now, that might mean we're very prudent with the funds that we have, uh, but are there? but are there opportunities where we want to accelerate academics, accelerate student readiness? And, and does that mean additional funding might be warranted? And then also, how do we ensure that staffing levels and compensation of staffing is at a level that we think is appropriate for our community? So those are for another discussion.
We need to pass levies.
That's exactly it.
Any further questions? Otherwise, up for a potential vote is the approval of the preliminary 2026 budget and
I'll make the motion.
LTFM plan. There is a motion by Director Baker. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second by Director Anderson. Any discussion on the vote? Director Thompson?
Yeah, I think, I am appreciative of this preliminary budget proposal. I think from where we, where we have been over the past couple of years, we've made continuous strides to, to move forward. I like that it is conservative, and that definitely makes us in a much favorable position and give us some flexibility if, if things go sideways. I do feel like part of this exercise, and now I've gone through this three times, and same with you, too, when the budget has come, I would like for us to be more, I, I like to be more involved, and, and maybe that's independence where, where I want to know the fight more, the financials even more so, and further ahead. I know that maybe before we started, the previous superintendent went through an exercise when we went through some budget reductions, some sort of, kind of a, what are the top 10 things you want to keep, or the, you know, things that are, areas that we can cut, and what does that look like? And I believe there was a technology assessment that was done around all the software and licenses that, that we did a few, a few years, few years back. But for the next budget cycle, I would like for us to contain, entertain a zero-based budgeting approach, where it won't, it wouldn't impact every single program area. I would like it to impact at least some, at least four of them. That would be my recommendation. That would be attached to this proposal, I'm sorry, attached to this motion approval, so that it gives the district some time and for us to think through, you know, what would that look like having the district support services category, the pupil support services, and the instructional support services? And those would be the top three that I would ask, that we entertain a zero-based budgeting model for the next budget cycle. And so to, I'll pause here.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking about that when we went through that budget process, too, what that looked like. But I also feel like there were some things that we started during that time that were never quite finished, or we, we never received resolution on program assessments that were occurring that we never heard about, like for Impact Academy, and then, gosh, I, it's, I'm losing the one that was at the high school level.
Yep.
It was on the A&amp;I plan.
A&amp;I, oh, Avid.
Yeah, Avid.
We were supposed to bring that back, or they were saying that they were going to, and then it just kind of like disappeared.
Right. So, I mean, just maybe like an assessment of some of those, or an update, maybe, on some of those things as part of that process would be helpful in determining budget, budgetary needs.
So, so I want to recognize that a, a zero-based budgeting model is time, time-consuming. It is intensive. But I also don't feel like it should be some, something that could be applied to every single program category. We don't need to justify kindergarten classes. We don't need to justify special education classes. But when we think about district support services, when we think about, you know, some of the technology that we have within the instructional support services, what about school security, pupil transportation? Zero-based budgeting is, is if you had to start from the beginning, what do you need to be effective, and how much money would that cost? And then you bring that back and say, this is how much we need to be a really good department or section, or a business unit. And it may be more, or it may be less than what's being proposed. But it is good business hygiene to make sure that, are we spending the dollars effectively? And so part of this proposal and the adoption of this budget, my recommendation is that could we, would, is the board open to adding, adding a zero-based budgeting exercise for three or four of these program codes within the general fund?
Are you really looking at everything that's not just instruction-based, you know, teachers in the classroom, looking at everything above, you know, what we're already required to provide contractually?
Yes.
Like under the ELM contract? So district office operations, administration, support staff?
Yes.
Stuff like that?
Yep. Yep. Anything that isn't classroom-facing instruction is, is what I'm envisioning. And, and again, it's not an exercise to say that these roles are not important. It's an exercise for us to recalibrate. Okay, i- is this, is this truly, truly necessary? How does this particular money that we are spending align to the strategic priorities of our district? And when we finalize our strategies and priorities in, over the summer, that ought to feed into the zero-based budget, budgeting for the following year?
Can I ask a question about it? Because this, this is kind of outside my realm, and so I'm trying to understand, like, the purpose for it beyond, like, what we already do. But the way that you're explaining it, I'm understanding it as almost like an evaluation of specific systems within our budget. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Specific programs, codes.
Okay, all right. I just, I just want to make sure I'm comprehending that.
And part of those program codes could incorporate the Avid program. Like, yes, we got rid of it, but what did we replace it with? And, and is that something we want to continue if the dollars are XYZ, and, and the return on investment may not be there? And now, again, these are things that as a board, we should probably know, we have an Avid program, or we don't have an Avid program. We have a mentorship program, we don't have a mentorship program. And so these are things where, where are the gaps? Because if we know there are gaps, that allows us to be more planful for the next school year as we kind of set the stage. We have to be nine to 12 months ahead, because whatever we are deciding as a strategy, technically, we should be having our strategy formalized or finalized in, like, October, November, which allows the administration to make sure, what do you need to do in January, February in budgeting? And then any hiring in March, so that we can train and educate the staff over the summer, so that they can execute in the September school year. And then we start again our strategy session in September. So that's how I'm thinking we want, we need to be ahead.
As you go through the zero-based budgeting concept, I mean, I like the idea of taking a look at what are all the other positions, programs, things that we have, and looking at it, saying, is this still driving us towards student success? Whatever we decide that means, like, is it still meeting the objective? Are we getting value out of all of those dollars? Or should we consider something else? If it's Avid, if it's some other program, if it's, you know, we should be pushing, you know, lower class sizes or whatever, are there, are there programs or things that we are executing currently today that might be better served in a different capacity, those dollars? So I think this would help bring it to light and force leadership to kind of say, these are the important things. These are our next, nice-to-haves, and if we got to cut something, this would be it. But it also kind of helps us align on, are we delivering on our mission? So.
And here's, and here's an example. Like, in, on page 47, I, I am not saying we shouldn't spend this much money, but the activities and athletics category of our school district, we spent $6.1 million between salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, memberships, and miscellaneous things like that. Again, not at this moment saying we shouldn't spend 6.1 million, but it's one of those where, does it make sense as an organization, we recalibrate and assess, do we need all these programs? Are there programs we ought to discontinue? I don't know. Are, are, do we have it just for five people? And stuff of that nature. So that, that, so my recommendation, or my, if there's alignment here, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to add zero-based budgeting for the next school year, the 100 series, the 600 series, and the 700 series. And, and you could even throw the administration in, in that category as well.
I would do that.
I, can you, can you identify what those, those are for people that are listening?
The, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
You can.
Yep. The, the administration series includes the Board of Education, the Superintendent's Office, instructional, instructional admin, about $4.7 million in expenditures. The district support services, the 100 series, would include the office, the business support services, legal services, HR, school elections, which, which encompasses about $4.8 million. The 600 series includes general instructional support, curriculum, media center, technology, staff development, which is a total of $22.9 million. And then the 700 series includes pupil support services, counseling, school security, drug abuse programs, pupil transportation, which incorporates 15.6 million. I don't anticipate that there will be a lot of cost savings out of the pupil support services, because you've got a big chunk of that 10.7 million out of the 15 million is transportation. Like, there, there isn't going to be a lot that we can do there. But I, I think for, from a board perspective, I would have a little bit more peace of mind knowing that, that we went through an exercise, we went and saw, and, and we, and looked underneath the hood to say, all right, this is what we are spending our money on. These are the contracts that we have, and this is the return on investment, so that if there are extra dollars that are available, could we reallocate that elsewhere?
All right. Can you just clarify your, your motion real quick? What were the four areas?
Can I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
Sorry. Now I feel like we're amending, amending. I, I kind of feel like this should be somewhat directed by our superintendent and business, or our directors, just because I feel like they probably have a better idea of how long certain, like, analysis of certain areas might take. So let's say we approach this from a year-to-year kind of model, that they might say these ones would take, like, I'm, I'm, like you're saying, one of those categories might take very little time, one of the categories might take a lot of time. And so I think they would have more knowledge in terms of how to develop a strategy there.
Yeah.
Given where we're at.
There's a time limit, but.
Yeah, given where we're at, though, I mean, I think you're almost looking at kind of 26, 27 budget, like, having any impact anywhere.
Right.
It wouldn't affect what, what's here.
No, I just mean, if, if
It's going to be a time.
If we're having them present to us, for instance, in the next several months on these, what he's talking about, I think if I'm looking at that from, from the superintendent lens, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Bowman, but it might take, it might take more investment or time or collaboration with groups to understand how certain areas work in terms of the funding. So it's not going to have the immediate budget impact, but would there be a strategic approach to something like that, that he would have more information on than we do?
No, I welcome, I'd just like to know which the four are. We look under the hood. This presumes, we're not doing, I, I'm going to have to get exactly what the zero-based model is that you're referring to, so we can take a look at that and assess that, which is no big deal. It presumes we don't already calibrate, which we do, but we'll continue to do it. Maybe there's a different method that we could use. But I just want to make sure, for the purposes of the motion, I got 100, 600, 700 series. I didn't get the other one.
That's it.
And you can throw in the, the 000, or the, the administration series, if you want. It was, it's 4.7 million. The, the one above district support services on page 41.
Okay.
I, I think maybe what I'm hearing, though, is you guys already have a process that you do yourselves.
Well, so zero-based is a very specific methodology. I can say we are not doing a specified methodology. So it's, this is perfectly fine. We can absolutely do this. This is consistent with trying to reorganize at the senior level. These two gentlemen and chief of staff, we can get after this, and we should. So I got no problem with that. I just want to make sure that the method and the reporting back meets the intent and the expectations of the board.
So one thing, just to note, and clarification for everybody who's never gone through any sort of an exercise like this, sometimes it will highlight the fact that we don't have enough resources in certain areas, and it will very clearly point out, we should probably spend another 5 million in this bucket to really be effective in it.
I think that's good.
And I welcome, I welcome that opportunity.
But, but that, again, it goes, well,
Has to be that same money sometimes.
Sometimes. Or, you know, and again, but, but again, again, it gives you the decision point. Like, do we have to take that to the community and say, if we really want to be effective at XYZ, this is what it'll take to cover? Or do we have to make additional changes throughout the district and funnel money in a different way? It's, it's an open lens.
So back to the, back to the motion, just so we're clear. So there's a motion to amend the motion to approve these with the addition that we're going to provide some direction to the district office to do a zero-based budget practice for the administration expenses, 100 series, 600 series, and 700 series.
I'll second the amendment.
All right, there's a second. Any discussion? I just want to clarify that, I mean, we will at some point discuss what the appropriate timeframe is to have this back. The goal is, we'll probably be using the 26 budget, but it's really for the following fiscal year, right? Any adjustments?
And I wanted to set the stage so that Bill and the team have enough or road or runway to talk through this, figure out the logistics, the, the people, because it will be labor-intensive, because you're going through, justifying why you need something. And if you had to start from scratch, and what does it look like? And so it's, uncover some things and uncover some things. And that will lead to what we might need as a district going into January for staffing models, and then how we want to plan for budgeting for the following year with upcoming elections in November. So there's, it's setting the stage so that you've got the data, and you can decide how you want to proceed forward.
Yeah. And Carly, to your point, we might want to break it up for discussion purposes and, you know, take your advice as, hey, we should discuss this one first, or this is going to take a little bit more time to dig into and have a couple of different sessions to discuss the different series. Any other discussion? If there are none, on the motion to amend, to include, in addition to the approval, the zero-based budget exercise for the 100 series, administration expenses, 600 series and 700 series, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the amendment is approved. Any discussion on, back to now the amended motion?
I thought Bill did a good job on this proposal.
Bill and your team, thank you.
Yep. And Mr. Baker.
Is there a?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to appro- All right. Being a first and a second, to approve the amended motion, which is, just so I'm getting the language correct, if I can find it, the approval of the LTFM plan as presented, and the preliminary fiscal year 2026 budget as presented, as well as directing the district office to perform the budget exercise of a zero-based budget for the 100 series, administrative expenses, 600 series and 700 series. There being a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
With that, I would move to adjourn. Is there a second? A second, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, done.
Thank you.